This conference will now be recorded.
Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Speak into the mic.
I call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to all. The regularly, the regular meeting of the board of supervisors of the Sun Valley Sebring Improvement District is scheduled for, well, that's Friday, April 2nd. I apologize for that. The next regular meeting of the board of supervisors will take place Friday, May 6, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. at the community center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence and turn off your cell phone. We are going to start with the consent agenda. And before we do, I just want to make comments on our last meeting. There was a problem with our systems. So the minutes that you saw on the website were at best a recollection of what we thought happened at the meeting. We didn't have the actual audio tape, so I apologize for that. We think we have fixed the problem and going forward, we should be fine. Okay, A, summary minutes of the board of supervisors' weekly meeting held April 1st, 2022. Do I have a?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board? Any public comments? Do we have a vote, please? Deb.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
And President Brooks.
Yes. B, February treasures report. The explanations that were challenged last meeting on pages 21 and 23. I assume everybody has gotten those. Does anybody have any other questions on that or if they all can answer? From the board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any public comments? Any, any public comments? Okay, we have a vote.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
President Brooks.
Yes. February golf financial reports. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody from the board have any comments on that? If you guys noticed, it is the new form. We made the changes that I talked about last time. So we actually have a total operating income line and then we added in the capital. So we now have a line that shows actually everything, with the exception of the major capitals, where it would be something like the irrigation system. So the normal capital is now included and obviously all the numbers have changed accordingly.
I, I don't know. For whatever reason, mine's got all kinds of blue tint on it. It's made it very difficult for me to read the item.
Yeah, well, mine was, but I had another copy.
Any reason why these are coming out like this?
Just as the color from the copier.
It was, I mean, the copy that I got.
The small size of the print, it's kind of very difficult.
Yeah, we have to be careful. The copy I got in the book, you get, I had it gotten a copy earlier, but the copy I got in the book was blue tinted and it does make it a little difficult to read, so. I do have a question, Michael, if I may, on your numbers. It was a number that kind of stood out to me that got a little bit concerned, concerning, the food and beverage cost of goods sold, or cost of sales, excuse me, was extremely high. It's the first time that's happened. It was 68,847 on revenues of 162,000. That percentage seems to be a lot out of whack compared to the first four or five months of the month of the year, excuse me. So my question to you, is this something that's reflective of everything we're hearing about inflation or is just, just an odd month?
Good morning. In my opinion, I think it's just a little bit of an odd month, obviously. Sales were up slightly, so the cog should be up slightly, but I think you're definitely correct on the, the percentage being slightly high. I would say there might have been an invoice that fell in the wrong month, so I think there should be a correction there. So it should, it should level itself back out. I'm not, I wouldn't pertain that to inflation. I mean, we try to, we try to navigate through that with, with the price of what we're selling. So is, it is a valid point there, but I am, I am not concerned about it.
What?
We just finalized March yesterday. It came in at 32.8%, so it lowered it down. We are operating for cost of sales at 36.8% for the year in March on a 35.8% budget. So it's, we're about a point high. So yes, it did reverse out in March.
Okay, good.
As long as you have, what were your sales compared to?
In March?
Yeah.
F and B revenue was 176,000. Budget was 158,000, so about $18,000 above. Prior year was 131,000.
Cost of goods?
Cost of goods was $58,000 or 32.8%.
Okay.
Well, that's 10,000 lower than it was.
Yeah.
So that's a big difference. So we'll just call it an odd month and that it's corrected itself going forward. Any other comments on specifics in the report from the board? I do have one other question. I was just curious, what is Sun Belt Rentals? Because I saw a payment here of almost $1,500. What are we renting?
So the Sun Belt Rentals was back when we rented the lift for the trees and then the chipper. We had a little discrepancy with some of the invoices with the chipper. They billed us extra, so once we sorted that out, we did have an invoice left to pay. So that 1,500, that's from the chipper from December.
Okay.
So it just, it just fell later in the year. It was kind of too late to accrue it, but it was because they had invoiced us for too much, so we had to sort out our account with them and then that's what the balance was.
Okay, wait a minute, I got two other ones I'm just curious about. Easy Go, that's golf carts, right?
The Easy Go golf cart lease, that would be the extra 10.
Because it was 18, well, there was $1,800 check written to them.
Right, so we, so we're talking back in February, so that, we pay $1,000 a month for those carts plus transportation. So they get here in January, the invoices for the carts and the transportation of it and the check.
Are these those extra 10 carts that we use?
Correct.
We're done with that now, right?
They left last week.
Left last week?
Yep.
Okay, then one other one. Precision Small Engine Company.
Okay.
That was over 2,000 bucks. What was that?
Usually, and Jimmy can probably break it down a little more, but that's typically repair, equipment repair.
Correct.
Good morning. So Precision is what's called a supermarket. It's kind of like a, they do engine repair, parts for us, they do golf cart repairs for us, whatever we need, they have parts. So whatever that particular item, we buy the target rings from them, we buy the cup liners from them, cups as well, they're the par eight and standard suppliers. So I'd have to look at the actual thing in order to do it.
Okay, I was just curious. I didn't recognize the name. That's all I have. Anybody else from the board have anything for? Any public comments?
When you guys come up to the mic, you should be identifying yourself for, seeing how we're trying to get this on record.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
President Brooks.
Yes. All right, this is, now it's public comment for anything not related to what we're going to discuss still yet today. Does anybody have any public comments they would like to make at this point? All right, let's move on. Scott Coret.
Scott Kerewak, Collins County Commissioner, District 3. Good morning, supervisors and staff. A couple of things to report to you this morning. Received from Chris, your general manager, an email a few weeks ago containing the resolution that you folks adopted for the paving of Schumacher Road. Staff is working on that. Before that would appear on our agenda, they've got to do their due diligence to put in a board packet to, for the board to decide on the fiscal impact. I've got staff researching a couple of cost scenarios on Schumacher Road. I want them to look at paving it just to Cortez. Of course, of course, the agreement would be if we're doing that, you folks would be extending Cortez. You've asked us for to pave Schumacher Road. I know the county's desire was to pave the entire length of Schumacher Road, which of course brings extra expense if we go past Cortez. And their, their theory for that is, is that that would, that would eliminate the requirement to grade any of Schumacher Road if it was paved all the way to the end and it would end that maintenance cost of Schumacher. But of course, there's additional cost for each foot of road that you pave. And I know that you folks know that that road is going to have to be reengineered and shifted a little bit to the north, some drainage work done along there. So we're looking at that. That is work in progress, okay? So I want you to know that that is, that is on my radar. It's on my priority list when I meet with the administrator. Second thing that Chris had submitted to us was some projects that you folks had out here that you were looking for some ARPA, American Rescue Plan, funding that the county received. And there was a list of 10 items on there that totaled $1,511,100, okay? Recently, this week's board meeting, we've had some more money come available in the ARPA plan due to Spring Lake. They were allocated initially last year through the process of allocation of the funds that the county received for some broadband expansion out there. And that got the attention of Comcast and Xfinity. And through those efforts, Comcast has come in and they are going to provide all the cabling and installation. So that has freed up some money that was earmarked for that Spring Lake broadband expansion. With that being said, the first nine items on your list total $561,000. The last item is a $950,000 item for some stormwater drainage work towards the back of your community, towards the preserve. Staff has expressed a desire. Spring Lake has freed up about $1.2 million. They were first allocated $1.25 million for their broadband expansion. They did incur some costs on some studies and some engineering out there, which they are asking for about $30,000 to $40,000 of that funding to be able to be reimbursed for those expenses since they've got Comcast to foot the big part of that bill. So that is freed up $1.2 million for future allocations. It's my goal and my intention to, I have met with the county administrator on that and I'm going to request for this to be put in front of the board as soon as we can to fund the first nine projects that you have out here that would total $561,000. Of course, we don't have funding to do the $1.5 million plus. And staff has shown, the administration has shown some desire to, some of these projects due to the inflation that we're all experiencing are running a little bit over budget. So they're wanting to not designate some of that funding that got freed up from Spring Lake to make sure that we've got enough to cover some of these costs on ongoing projects. So that is encouraging news for your district and I will continue to keep you updated on that and push forward on that. So that is looking promising with the recent development of Spring Lake freeing up those funds. So we potentially can help you folks out with a little bit over half a million dollars of these projects that you have, which is some improvements to some pumps and some new pumps and what have you with your utility system and what have you. So I have the list that Chris gave to me and I'm sure that you folks have that also. The only other thing that I have and question, I know last time I spoke with your staff that garbage or the recycling can pickup, the number was about 118. Does that number remain close to the same or in that area, is it more or less or?
We got our final numbers in. We had them due yesterday and the final number that we have listed is 186.
186, okay. The administrator is going to get with Chris and work on how we will facilitate getting these picked up. Wanted to get you, your feeling here on, I know with, as you know, in today's world and the problems with filling open positions, not only in the public, but the private sector also, we currently have over 50 positions available in the county that we're having trouble filling. And that doesn't, carries over certainly Waste Connections or Solid Waste Provider, they're having some health issues also. So anything that you folks can do to help out in rounding up these cans, I don't know if the residents have the ability or some of them may, some may not, would have the ability if we could get them to maybe bring them to your maintenance facility or something and then we would come pick them up, we'd come get them all picked up. If there is residents that are unable to do that because of either physical limitations or don't have a vehicle or something that they can lay their can in their trunk, then we would try to address those addresses individually. But one of the, what I'm being told, one of the heavy lists here would be that if we have to go to 186 homes individually, certainly is going to take some manpower and some, some time. So any cooperation or anything that the residents and staff here can assist the county and Waste Connections in getting those cans, I will commit to you and my staff is committed that they won't be laying in your maintenance facility for long. If you get, you know, 60 or 80 of them turned in, what do we, we'll put on a trailer, we will get them picked up. If another wave of them comes in to get the 180 some odd cans picked up, we will do everything that we can do to work with your district and getting those cans picked up for you. That's about all I have tonight, if you have any questions for me.
Well, the garbage, the garbage can deal, I think we can certainly come to an agreement on, on a location that'll work for you guys. I think what, what's more importantly first is for you guys to work out a date.
Okay.
So that we can work it backwards and say, you must have the cans here by such and such.
Okay, sure.
People notice.
I'll let our county administrator get with Chris and they can start working on that so you folks can get it out in your newsletter. And yeah, if you could create a common drop off point for those cans.
I think we can.
Then that would help out a bunch.
I think we can and I appreciate the fact that you guys are willing to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And listen, I realize there may be some cases that you have, some people that are physically not capable of moving that can or, and if it is, give us those, give us that information and we'll work through it.
Let us see where we are. I mean, we may be able to go pick them up ourselves and bring them to the locations.
Yeah, I said, it's just there, you know, everybody's having a hard time getting help these days and certainly this is something that's a little bit extra, but we will make sure that we see this through for the district. And my hope is, you know, we meet every two weeks like you folks do as far as the ARPA funding for the $561,000 worth of projects. That's probably going to be a few agendas away, but staff is aware of it and they're aware of my desires and your requests that you've made. So I'm cautiously optimistic on that, but I'm, like I said, I think we can move that forward.
Well, if you can make it happen, I'll tell you, we will be greatly appreciative.
Well, listen, I, you know, you folks are in my district. Anything that we can do to help you out and everything that your general manager had presented, you know, we'd spoke before on everything that we do with these funds that came from the federal government have to get risked on how, the rating on how eligible they are or whether the eligibility is questionable and that that money would have to be paid back after the audit. And every one of the projects that you folks submitted, every one of them scored a one, which is the least risk. So it's.
Scored a 10 on hours.
What's that?
It was a 10 on our list.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
So every one of them, I mean, every one of yours scored a one on all 10 requests. So that is, that is the highest rank and that they can get as far as eligibility. So, you know, I can't speak for the other commissioners, this will be a board decision, but as far as the risk factor, that's not a worry that the commission is going to have to worry about.
Again, thank you. Keep pushing Schumacher for us.
Yeah, like I said, we're working on that. I have plans to get with the landowner to the south that I know went to high school with him because I know that he had had some issues when this was talked about a few years ago. And I know Mr. Clark real well, so I plan on having lunch or going to meet with him to talk to him about this because I'm sure once this pops up on the radar for him, that he's going to resurface. So I like to be a little bit proactive, less reactive on something like that. So I'll meet and talk with him about it and see what his concerns are. And, you know, ultimately, I think one of his concerns are is that, you know, the extension of 635, you know, County Route 635, coming back to the north that we connect into Cougar Road here and eventually bring traffic across to alleviate some congestion out on the highway. I know that's one of his concerns. And maybe we can eliminate some of those concerns if we don't pave all the way down to the end of Schumacher, all the way to Blueberry. So that is some things that I'm going to speak with him about. I know if we do not pave the entire length of Schumacher, that still does not eliminate the maintenance concerns of grading the unpaved part. But if it's an easier, if, if, if it's an easier way to find funding to complete this project and just get down to Cortez where you would be extending it, because that would accomplish what you folks are looking for, to create another entrance into your community and may also alleviate some of the property owner's concerns to the south that is going to create more traffic all the way down to the end of his road to Blueberry Lane because it wouldn't be paved. So, you know, a lot of people don't like driving a dirt road. So there's really no need, I think, for community members that are coming in here, they would have no need to go past Cortez. The whole idea is to get them to come in on Schumacher and turn to Cortez and have a south entrance into your community. So I'm hoping maybe I can speak with him, that would eliminate some of his concerns and we can look on moving this forward. And we're in our budget cycle right now, working on our budget for next year. So staff is working on some numbers for me so we can see about maybe including some money in the budget for that. So I'll have more to report.
Okay.
Very good.
Any questions from you guys? That's for Scott.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm going to run along and certainly Chris and you folks know how to get in touch with me. If you need anything, please feel free to reach out. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Take care. Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to move on to the action agenda. As soon as the other meeting's done. You guys done?
Just clarifying a point.
Yeah. Okay, action agenda. A, notice a qualifying period for candidates for the board of supervisors, general election two seats, that would be Chris.
The motion to discuss?
Oh, motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Now it's Chris.
Okay, and this is really a requirement for the election coming up and we do have two open seats for the November election and this is a resolution asking for the board's approval just to move forward, provide the candidate seats that are open to the supervisor elections and then we can get the information out to any potential candidates to register in time to run in that election. And the qualifying period is pretty short, so we'll have to do a good job of getting the word out.
The qualifying period is very short. It's June 13th through June 17th. Which is.
Coming up?
Sure.
Yeah, we're trying to get in front of it and we do have to make a couple of changes to this resolution. We have Chapter 190 in there. It's really 189 or it's really the county ordinance that provides that, but there's a couple of scrivners there is in there, but otherwise it's ready to go.
I can't remember in the past, how did, did we do anything special to tell the community or how did we work that? I don't remember, to be honest. And what, you remember mine?
I know we had a candidate's night, that's the only thing I know on this, on the other election.
That was, that was once they got in.
Yes.
We can do, we'll do a full blast, yeah. We'll also put up notices at our office over at the golf club and the restaurant. Send notices to the HOAs and, you know, many groups out there and, you know, make sure they.
Is it, is it possible, Ariel, to put an extra piece of paper into our billings with the newsletters announcing that this election's coming up? Is that a possibility?
Yes, as long as we have that in enough time, we can send it to the printer. What happens is when we have an insert, the mailing machine that we have doesn't allow us to automatically put that in, so we have to hand stuff that piece of paper into each of the newsletter. So can we? Yes, but I, we would just need to know in plenty of time so that.
I would, I would think it'd be the right way to go as opposed to just including it in the newsletter, to have a separate piece of paper that, that explains that we have this election coming up.
Okay.
And if anybody's interested, this is how they proceed.
Okay.
So I would think if we can do that, that would be a good thing. You guys think?
Yeah.
In addition to the other things.
What's the cost of a special mailing?
That's what, something I was going to recommend. I can look into that. I'm not sure off the top of my head for, you know, just kind of a very simple mailing, like you can just send the paper, basically. I'll, I'll look and see what the cost of that would be as opposed to doing that in the newsletter if there would be a cost differentiation.
Yeah, because the, the, the important information is the qualifying period because if, if there's only two, we have two open seats and if there's only two qualifiers, then there's not an election because those two people are automatically, you know, will be automatically elected. Once the, once the qualifying period ends.
Right.
If there's only two people that have qualified, then there is not an election. So we don't have to actually go through the election process because there's only two qualified candidates and so they gets, they would get seated. So the important thing is people need to know that if they want to, if, if they want to have the opportunity, they need to be within that qualifying period. So that, that's what I'm saying is the, the important date is the qualifying period, not the election.
Right, right, I understand that. Well, the election's in November and they don't take the seats until when theoretically till January, right? I, I would agree with Craig. I think if we can do a special mailing on this, that would be the way to go.
It can't be. And a lot of times even sending a postcard, postcards are very inexpensive to send as well, they're.
As long as we notify them all in a, in a proper manner.
And when are you? And when are you, when are these needing to go out? Do you have like a timeframe for that?
You're talking June 13th is the, is the kickoff date for registration. So it's got to go out next month, early. I would go out as early in, in May as possible.
Yeah, soon as possible.
I mean, a lot of people think November election, they don't think June registration or June sign up. That's, that's the situation we're going to run into. So you gotta really make it on this piece, uh, stress the June big print, however you want to do it. I'll let you and Chris decide on how that goes and get it out. If it's only a couple of bucks, I'd do it. You don't even, I don't want to come back to the board and have to have another conversation on it. If, unless it's absolutely necessary.
I think we can handle it.
Any other questions on, uh, this from the board? Anything from the public? Okay, let's move on. Proper emergency Stanford generator.
We've got to have a vote.
Vote.
I'm sorry?
Call the vote.
Oh, I have to vote on this? I'm sorry. Remember we have a vote.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Brooks.
Yes. Next is the proper emergency Stanford generator. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, this was, uh, this is a follow-up to the conversation we had last, at the last meeting. And the challenge, I believe, was on the size of the fuel tanks. So Chris, what do you, what do you got?
I think people are just looking at, because we had two generators we were approving, um, for that. And the quotes we had in the 25 KW generators were all quoted at 100 gallon fuel tank because they just don't use that much fuel. The larger 65 were all at 200 gallon fuel tanks. So it was all quoted the same. And it's really the reason for the 100 versus 200 is just the smaller size of the generator and it doesn't use that much fuel.
So your recommendation is to stay with the smaller sized generator?
Yes, sir. We, we, our recommendation is we had a, one large and one small generator in that request. And that was approved. There were just some people were looking at it. Why is this a 200 gallon tank and a 100 gallon tank? And it really had to do with the size of the generator. And they, all, all the 65s were 200 gallons. All the 25s were 100 gallons on the quote.
Any questions from the board? Any public questions, comments? So I assume now the vote is to approve the purchase of a 100 gallon tank generator. Is that correct?
It would, it would be to, uh, you know, it was really a question at the last board meeting and it's approving the 65 KW generator and the 25 KW generator.
Yep. I thought it was one, two?
Two.
Two.
Two. Prove two of them.
165, 125 KW.
And the total cost of that is?
Around roughly 46.
How much?
Roughly 46.
Forty-six thousand for the both of them?
Right.
Okay, that's right. I got it. All right, we have a vote?
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Brooks.
Yes. Website development. Have a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Website development. Chris?
Sure. And, uh, we, we talked with three vendors, um, looking at redeveloping the district's website. And, uh, came down to two we considered and brought into the office and had conversations with. And, uh, one was a local firm, Get Fish Slapped. We always like to try and work with local firms as if we can. The other one's a national firm, Revise. And they, they specialize in government websites. They have 2,600 clients. And 17 in Florida, including City of Largo, City of St. Petersburg. But government websites is their business. And both vendors were in that $10,000 to $11,000 range to do the website. And, uh, our staff recommendation is to go with Revise because we're really looking for a government website. However, if we have any extra marketing dollars available, we are going to work with Fish Slapped on that look. Cause they're really specialists in marketing and image. Where the guys are going to do a good job with the website, but we may want to, want some things that step it up a notch. I mean, maybe we run a drone down a couple of the fairways and have that in our new website or just some things with some real impact. But.
Let's, let's stick with fixing the website first if we could.
And so our recommendation is to go with Revise and a contract not to exceed $11,100.
Any questions from the board? So my question would be for $11,000, what exactly are they going to do? They're going to take our existing websites and consolidate it and redesign it into one?
Into one, and also it'll auto update. Like right now, we, we don't have a lot of those sections linked. So when we change something on one side of the website, it doesn't go over and auto update if it's posted somewhere else. That's one thing that they do.
Right, but the goal is to have how many websites when this is done, when this is done?
One.
One website for Southern Lake that I will go into and I will be able to maneuver and find out everything about Southern Lake and the golf course and the restaurant and the district, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct. And we're looking at having drop down scrolls for each of those entities. So people can, depending on what they're looking at, golf, restaurant. And, uh, a big part of the front end work with us is we have to sit down and every single thing that we're going to put into that website, like the meeting minutes, golf specials, restaurant specials, formalize it, you know, as a data element. Who's going to supply it? What's the date? What happens to it? And then after that, what happens to it? To ensure that we have a whole list and there'd probably be 150 things on there of data that comes in. And when it comes in and when it gets posted, because that same information will go onto our website. It'll go onto our Facebook page. It'll be used to support the newsletter and also to feed the digital bulletin board out on 27th. So we have a consistent message.
So once we get the one website built or up and running, who, how do we maintain it and who's going to maintain it?
Well, we have to, uh, they obviously revise, offer support, but we're going to have to designate a staff person that has ownership of it. And I'm looking that over right now, you know, how to take care of it. Because that's one of the things that happened last time, you know, different people took charge of it and did something to it and then dropped it.
There should be a designated person that everybody feeds the information to.
Right.
Right.
And then they take care of it on the website.
Yeah, and a whole log, like I said, that list of all those elements, okay, May, May's done. Did we get it from golf? Do we have restaurant specials? Do we have anything coming up, a special event? Is it going to go to the website? But is that one thing that goes to the billboard?
So we need to designate a person and to designate who that person reports to.
Right.
Okay. Are the chances of getting this up by September good, October?
That's, I, I think we will have it up and running by then and we'll bring a couple of drafts in and do a play-by-play for the board to show you what we're doing to make sure you're happy with it. As we develop it.
Do we see that's replacing the newsletter?
No.
Probably not a complete replacement. Um, in, and I know we'll probably discuss it a little later. Um, we had some conversation about ways that we can improve the newsletter and the content and the quality of the newsletter moving forward. I think that, um, as opposed to replacing it, this would just be a better tool for people to easily access the newsletter. Like an online version of the newsletter, um, should they need it, basically. I, I don't know that I would say replace it completely as much as just make it a little bit more easily accessible.
Any other questions? Any public comments? Then the, the, so the vote is to approve, uh, God, I can't remember the name.
Revise.
Revise, to approve, revises the resource to fix the website at a cost not to exceed $11,000.
100.
I'm sorry?
11,100.
May we have a vote, please?
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Brooks.
Yes. Okay. Code enforcement. Do I have a, uh, motion? Discuss. Okay, well, obviously this is a subject that we've been trying to do for a couple of weeks, a couple of months, whatever. What we're looking here is to identify what exactly, Bob, that you do. What you're supposed to do, what you can do, what in support of anything you need that you don't have. We're just trying to help you basically. Get, get your job done the best way you can.
Yes, and, uh, and I'm, I apologize for not being here for the last couple of meetings. I'm Bob Brumfield, code enforcement officer. Um, Chris and I, and I have had, uh, quite a few conversations on what we can do to enhance our code enforcement program as well as inform the community on what we can do and what we can't do. Now, seven, eight years ago, we created this, uh, code enforcement brochure that needs to be updated and, and re-revised a little bit. Uh, but what we, what, one thing we talked about was putting, uh, listing, we already have our top four or five violations that are most prevalent. And, uh, what we are also going to do were to list some county ordinances that we, we are not able to enforce, such as fencing. Um, uh, several things like home occupations, uh, barking dogs, noise ordinances. We don't have the ability to enforce any of that. So we would make a list of what we can do as well as what the county can do that we don't have the ability to do. And that might eliminate some of the people coming in and complaining about things that we're not able to solve. Uh, and that being said, we, we.
If I may, on the things that we're not able to solve, are we going to give them information? How they should go about contacting the county?
Correct.
Well, we should do that.
We will also have in here a listing of how to contact the county code enforcement office to, uh, and, and I work very closely with the county code enforcement people. But the, what seems to be one of the issues is people come in, they're not aware of what we are able to do and are not able to do. And if they know that ahead of time, then they won't come in here and take your time, take up your time about complaints that we're not able to, to address. Uh, so one, one instance of that is that house over on Granada. Now, we have over the years since probably 2014, uh, 2017, excuse me. We have put several liens on that property because they weren't mowing it. Uh, and they paid off, I think they owe 78, $700 still on one lien that they, uh, haven't taken care of yet. But they paid off the, the majority of the liens. So I think we had around $5,000 was the total amount. Uh, but they have not been doing anything for the last several years, other than mowing the property. And that's the main thing that we can address. With the trusses, the building department went in and said those trusses are failing. They need to be removed. So the county code enforcement, I was informed by them, they were going to, they were going to, uh, send a demo team out and remove them. Well, it turns out they didn't want to do that because then they would be liable for any damage done to the masonry, to the blockwork. So they just put, they just, uh, started imposing lien, uh, lien against the property, fining them $150 a day. And I think that, that those fines started April the 5th. So this is the 14th, 15th day since that's happened. The $150 a day, that's going to add up to quite a bit. The, if they do get to a point where the, the liens are more valuable than the property, the county can foreclose on it. And, and we don't really have the ability to do that, other than a long drawn out process. The county can address that's kind of a situation much faster than we do. But on the other side of that, we can take care of most things much faster than the county. Uh, I'll give you an example. We, we, um, our, uh, warning notices give people seven days to mow their lawn. Which it used to be 10, but we wanted to do a little quicker. So we changed it to seven and that's business days, not, uh, not weekends or holidays. The county gives 30 days. So we are so much faster than the county in most cases. And we have probably, I'd say 90 to 95% compliance. So that means that 5 to 10% of the, of the community is not in compliant. That any, I'll say any given, given day, that's not, um, constant. It's different, different places, different violations, but it's probably in that neighborhood. So our program is working. It, the, the, another issue is that people see a problem. So, uh, I know that on Ponce de Leon, we have a, a rash of renters that are, seem to be always parking in the yard. And we address that every time we see it, or I do. But, uh, and we send them warning notices and they go back onto the driveway. And we have in our ordinance that allows people with social invitees to park in the yard two times, two 24 hour period of time every month. Which makes it really hard to pin down people that are, that are constantly, that, that do it on a regular basis. Cause they, they know that, they've been warned about it. Uh, every time I send out a warning notice, I highlight the area of the, of the ordinance and send that to them as well. So most of the people that, that I have trouble keeping in compliance are aware of the, of the ordinance and they know how to get around it. Uh, the, we have, there's another part of the state statute that talks about, addresses repeat violators. But to be a repeat violator, you have to say either, yeah, I'm a, I'm guilty of doing that. They have to, uh, admit, uh, guilt or they have to go through the hearing process. And, and the, the judge has to rule in our favor. So it's, it's hard to get somebody on a repeat violation, other than, you know, things like grass. And, but as far as parking or trash cans, that's, that's a tough thing to, to find people with.
Why is the trash cans?
Trash cans? Well, there's a lot of issues with trash cans. And one is that, and, and Mr. Kerouac said that, uh, they're having problems with, uh, uh, employees. They, if they miss, if they, their truck breaks down, they don't have enough people to, to, uh, uh, pick up the cans. They, uh, you know, they come once a week. And with, since they've, you started with the big blue cans, they used to come twice a week. They picked up bulk items every Thursday. This is prior to the big cans. Now they pick up bulk items every two weeks and the, the lawn, the yard waste was always every two weeks. But they would pick up bulk every week. And I think that, uh, you know, that it's, it's a mistake not doing that because people get evicted. People move out, they bring all their stuff out and it parked on the, on the road. We come in Monday mornings and see that widespread, not always a lot of stuff. But, you know, the, the, it seems like every Monday I come around and look and I see a couch here or chair there or mattress or whatever. So the, the, the yard, the, the waste connection people, um, are part of the problem with the trash. They don't, they don't, just can't pick it up quick enough. Sometimes they, they have a truck break down, they don't get it picked up Friday, they don't get it picked up Saturday. Even on Monday, they haven't gotten them all picked up. So that's, you know, that's a tough thing. But we, we're always out looking, sending out no, warning notices. I can't think of the number. I didn't write it down, but I think we sent out 155 warning notices last month. And it, it has been in that, that general range every month. Uh, we send, we do, uh, address some of the issues that I see.
Of the 155, how many are repeats? What'd you say?
I'd say maybe as far, most of those are for parking. Uh, and, and a lot of times the trash cans would be, uh, probably not many repeat offenders for the trash cans, mostly for, I'd say maybe 10 people parking at the mu, at the max in the same, same address. And sometimes people, uh, and, and most of them are renters that we have issues with. But, uh, sometimes they, they, they move out of one house to another house and, you know.
Of the 150, did you, majority of them parking?
I'd say maybe 40 or 50 parking. Probably about that much for-
It was 192 according to your numbers.
Some, a lot of those were signs?
59 were parking.
Okay.
Out of 192.
So 60, 60 people parking?
That's your numbers.
Yeah. Yeah. And out of that 60, I'd say maybe eight to 10 have done it the previous month or in previous months.
Are we finding them?
We, some of them, we have fined some, yes. But it's, like I was saying, it's really hard to find them because as soon as I send them a warning notice, they comply, then the next month they're parking in the yard again.
Isn't that a repeat offender?
Not unless they get, not unless they say they, they're guilty, if they admit their guilt, or if they go to a hearing process.
David, explain that to me, please.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Well, to me, like I say, the biggest issue that we have is, Mr. Brumfeld is the only code enforcement officer we have. The way that the, the way that the ordinance is written is it, is it has to be his personal investigation in order to cite somebody. So, as I, as far as repeat offenders go, once again, it's solely on his shoulders as to, because it's, he would have to have seen the initial violation and then see the repeat violation to, in order to be able to, you know, for that person to be a repeat offender. Now, there's been some discussion in the past about what constitutes a repeat offender. And in my opinion, once, if the, if the, once a violation has been noticed, if it's noticed a second time, that's a, that's a repeat violation. So, plain and simple. So that's, I mean, to me, the issue is manpower because he's the only person that can do it.
Why is that?
Well, the state- He is the only, he is the only code enforcement officer in the district.
Wow.
So the board has the ability to designate other code enforcement officers.
How many guys do we have in, in security? You have nine right now in security? How many you got? One?
You, one.
Well, I think the synergy is, I've been thinking that for quite some time. We've got security driving these roads day in and day out. Why can't they be the eyes for him?
They, they do tell me about things.
I want them to know to put the warning on and make a record of it and give it to you so that now that is a repeat offender. And can they be acting code enforcement people or not?
I think the only issue that comes in there is training. They would, they'd have to undergo some sort of training, you know, to be, but the board, yes, can absolutely designate them as self. The ordinance.
Give me one second. Designated by the board.
It's us, right? We make the decision on this.
Well, let me just state one thing. We have to go by the state statute. Code enforcement in Florida is governed by a state statute. And the definition of a repeat violation in the state statute is stated, it means a violation of a provision of a code ordinance by a person who has been previously found through a code enforcement board or any other quasi judicial or judicial process to have violated, or who has admitted violating the same provision within five years prior to the violation, notwithstanding the violation occurs at different locations. That to me means they have to admit guilt, or they have to go through the hearing process and be adjudicated.
We may change that.
No, I was going to say that- Let me clarify for a second. So what would the, if we cite people, if we issue a citation, if a code enforcement, if a code enforcement officer issues a citation, and that citation is paid, that is an admission of guilt.
Exactly. Yeah.
So-
It has to be a repeat offender, and he's saying, a repeat offender can only be deemed as a repeat if he admitted guilt.
Well, see, the whole process starts all over again the next month because you'll-
If you have documentation that somebody violated one of our policies and they, and they fix it, and then they do it the following month, you're telling me that's not two, it's one again?
It's one again. Because it states in our ordinance that you're allowed to park two times a month for a social invitee. Now, if they have a car there, it may be their car, but if they had, they can come and say, well, I just had a guest come in, I had to park over there. So I see, I see the car in the yard.
Let me, let me ask you, how many violations have we issued this year? I mean, how many actual money violations?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can give you, I can give you an idea of what-
How many people have been fined?
How many people have been fined?
For parking?
For anything.
I don't have that information on the top of my head. But I can tell you, since 2010, we fined and collected around $170,000 since 2010. Before 2010, we weren't allowed to impose a fine. Code enforcement started in 2004. That's when the county gave us the ability to enforce these minimum maintenance standards. And I started in 2008 and I realized that we weren't able to find anybody. So in 2010, we went to the county and got them to give us the ability to impose liens, which we did. And since then, we've, what, do you remember what it is, Amanda? It's around $170,000, $180,000 that we've leaned properties since then. But I don't know what it is this month, this year so far.
Okay.
Do you want me to read that?
I really, I don't, I really don't know.
There was a vehicle parked on Granada and Alamo or something like that. It was, it was like a hookup to a car. It was on the corner there. Are you familiar with it? It was there for about a week and a half?
On Alito and Matanzas?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a trailer there. Those people are probably going to get evicted because of that.
Well, whatever it is that was on the lawn, it's fine now.
Yeah.
Do we find, do we do anything about that?
I talked, I, I went through the property manager on that because they were renters and I would have to find the owner. And they also had a broken down vehicle on their driveway.
Yeah, that was, that was lifted up?
Yeah. And they, they have to probably move out because of that. But no, I did not find them for that.
Because it was there like, what, a week?
Probably, yeah. It's not the first time I've had problems with them. They've been there since 2014, I think, and I've sent them about 14 violations.
How long does it take you to drive the neighborhood? I mean, how often do you get around to the whole place? How many times a week can you make a?
I try to get around the whole area every day. But I, I don't always make it. Depends on if I get called to go check on something. It takes me about five hours, not count going out into the back, just driving around the populated streets, about four to five hours.
Well, I think you're understaffed. I don't think, I think you need help. I mean, not a reflection on you, I just don't think that you've got one pair of eyes taking care of all of a sudden a lake.
And the population's growing like crazy. You know, when I started, it was part-time.
I think the first thing we have to do is figure out what kind of support he can get.
In my opinion, the most reasonable thing to do would be to train the security officers so that they can be designated as code enforcement officers as well. Figure out what that, what that training would entail.
We, we did have another code enforcement officer at one time, back, back when we made this brochure. But he has moved on.
All right, let's assume we got you some additional help. Does it work that if the additional help reports to you and says, these are violations we saw, that you can take it from there and execute what is necessary to execute? Whether you find them, if, I guess we have to get clarification on repeat offenders.
Yeah, let me read this to you real quick. Okay. So here's what the, this is what our ordinance says. If upon personal investigation, a district code enforcement officer finds that the person has not corrected the violation within the time period, the district code enforcement officer may issue a citation to the person who has committed the violation. So that's, they go by, they see a violation, they notify that person, you have X amount of time to correct this violation. That, and like I say, if that's, if someone's parking on the grass, that could be, you have 24 hours, or you have 12 hours, or you have six hours, as long as it's reasonable amount of time. It doesn't take long to move a car off of the grass and onto a prepared surface. So they, the code enforcement officer gives a reasonable amount of time to correct the violation. If they don't correct it in that time period, they can be issued a citation. Then it says, a district code enforcement officer does not have to provide the respondent with a reasonable time period to correct the violation prior to issuing a citation, and may immediately issue a citation if a repeat violation is found, or if the district code enforcement officer has reason to believe the violation presents a serious threat to the public health, safety, or welfare. So in my opinion, that means if someone parks on the grass, they're given 24 hours to move the vehicle, they move the vehicle, okay, that's nice, you've now corrected that violation. If they come back the next day and a car is parked on the grass, that is a repeat violation. And they can be issued a citation right then and there.
You okay with that?
Well, to-
I mean, that's, he's reading whatever our rules are.
Yeah, but there's other things that are involved with that. In order to write a citation, you have to still send a notice of violation. You can't just write them a ticket. You have to send them a notice of violation, which is, states in there-
That's not what he wrote.
Well, it is, it is written in there.
Yeah, you have to give them notice, but I mean, that notice can be posted.
Right, give them notice, then you-
So you have to give them a notice of violation, which is separate from what I normally, I, I have two, two documents that I send out. One is a warning notice, which gives them time. And 95% of the time, that's-
But that's the same thing as a notice of violation, isn't it?
No, it's different. Notice of violation gives them a deadline. It states all, all of the things. It has to be sent out, registered mail and certified mail, or it has to be posted on the property. Now, if you post a property, you have to post 10 days before the deadline.
Man, all I'm trying to do is make this-
Code enforcement is not-
I'm trying to make this better for the district. That's what we're trying to do here. And it sounds like we're butting heads here.
I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just telling you what the rules are and what I have to go by.
So you can't write, you can't write a violation saying you've got 24 hours to fix this?
Yes, but I have to make sure that it's, if I do that, I have to send them a notice of violation. When they get a notice of violation, they, they comply. Once they get that, they're in compliance.
Do you have, do you mail these?
Yes. It has to be mailed, regular mail and certified mail. And it gives them a deadline to have it done. I tell you, one, one thing that would help is if you do away with the social invitees being allowed to park on the grass. Say there's no parking on the grass. Then I wouldn't have to worry about them being able to do it the next month.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, you know, let's, let's face it. We have people come over to our houses, and if there's more than a couple, you don't have room to park.
And I-
And how are you going to have a night of entertainment at your home if you can't, at times, park in the grass?
And that's the very reason that the board, previous board has said, no, they don't want to take that out.
And I understand that, I just, it's, those aren't the people that we're, that are causing the issue.
Yeah. In my opinion, the people that are causing the issue are the ones that do it perpetually. Like, you know, they're, they, they park on the grass until they're told to move, they move it, and then next day they're doing the same thing.
Well, not necessarily the next day, but maybe the next month.
Correct. And I'd say, there's, there's a difference, in my opinion, there's a difference between social invitees and owners. Like I say, social invitees are allowed to park on the grass for a couple of times, but that does not, social invitees are completely different than, than owners or residents. So if it's a resident, that's completely, that's continually violating, that's not the same thing. So, but that, like I say, that's, to me, the issue is we're, we're erring on the side of caution far too much. That's just, that's, that's my opinion. And I think we've got a little bit more ability to cite people than is occurring.
Do you have access with, when you have a plate number that you can identify the individual and their address?
I do, yeah.
Does that not tell you, well?
Can't always see the plates, for one thing, but when I do run a plate, it usually doesn't come back to, sometimes I can't get it if it's an out-of-state plate. Sometimes it's, it's registered to that resident. I don't know, the way that the, the things have been going on with the economy, with the COVID, you know, you, we're getting all kinds of strange things going on that haven't been happening prior to two years ago, such as people moving in with their families. They got three, four cars and they have one, one car driveway and, and, you know. If you go around and you see cars parked sideways or halfway on the driveway or at an angle, those are the ones that I've talked to and worked with, and they're trying to comply. But if you go down Ponce de Leon, you see a couple of renters that come in and out pretty frequently. They've got people there that are parking in the yard. I send warning notices to the tenant as well as the owners, and then they'll be in compliance for a little while. And then they go back to doing it again. So we go through the whole cycle all over again. I would love to be able to go say, hey, you're getting fined. But I don't think that I have that ability.
Why not?
If, if-
What do you need to get that ability?
The state statute to be changed.
Well, obviously-
I'm just sorry, I fundamentally disagree with that. I disagree. I disagree with that. Our ordinance gives us the power to issue citations upon personal observance after a reasonable notice period. And if they, if they don't like it, if they get issued a citation and they object, they, we have a special magistrate that handles those issues. So they would get to have their, you know, due process and quote-unquote "day in court" with the special magistrate if they want to argue against it. So.
Can you live with that?
Yeah, we can, we can give that a try, sure. I don't, it just seems like, I, I just don't agree that that's the way that the state statute is written. I mean, Mr. Schumacher is a lawyer, I'm not. I just know what code enforcement involves and what I've been taught and all the, all the classes I've attended and the conferences I've been to. But, you know, if he, he seems to think that's, that'll work, then we can try it.
Chris, what do you think?
I think we can try it, go with that. And I think the idea is to mesh with security, allow them and give them the proper training would help to get more eyes out there. And with those people out there, Bob can pretty much handle the paperwork he's generating now. But if you have five or six people, you know, during the week, giving them 50 or 60 code violation notices, you know, there's going to be some administrative help that he's going to need.
Well, if we, if we have 50 or 60 code violations, there's a problem.
And I would think that if, in fact, we do have that many, that it would be quickly reduced.
I do too.
With them knowing that, you know, security is also out there, or security plus code enforcement.
Yeah.
I believe that if they know we're watching, then it'd definitely be reduced.
From the administrative standpoint, the questions that come into my mind, you know, is that clerical type support?
Well, if they're-
Maybe we need to get a temporary clerk before-
Let's find out first of all.
That period.
Let's find out first of all, if, if we're all comfortable with this working, let's get perhaps some security people trained. Let's let him take the reins. And if he tells us that he can't deal with the paperwork because it's too much, we can then address it at that time. But until then, I'm not going to say it's okay to give him additional help when we don't even know yet.
I think the first time somebody is fined, that's going to make a big difference. When they know that we are really watching them. And with-
I agree.
With cell phones and, and copies of repeat offenders and license plates, keep that- that, you've got a computer, put it in there.
Well, another issue is, the majority, the vast majority of those that are, are violating are renters. And I have to go to the owner. The owners are the ones that get fined.
They're, they're getting the money from the renters, aren't they?
Exactly.
But it's not that, they have to get the paperwork. It's, it's not like I can go hand it to them, they have to get the paperwork. So it may not happen in a couple of days, it might take a week before they get back to them.
But that would be your call, because you know which ones are renters, right?
Oh, I know which ones are renters, yeah.
Well, then you make the call. If, if it's, if you have to send it to the actual owner, then you give him a little bit more time to respond.
Right.
If it's somebody you know that lives there year-round, it's a different approach.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll try that, sure.
What are the fines?
Hundred dollars a day.
Hundred dollars a day?
Up to $500.
Oh, I'm sorry?
There's a cap of $500 for a civil citation, which is what it would be.
Okay.
And if they come in and pay, well, I shouldn't say that, because I think that's changed. But it used to be if they came in and paid, which would make them, it would be an admittance of guilt, they would, they'd have to pay $375. But I don't know that that's correct anymore.
There is a, there is a reduction. If they, if they, if they don't object, if they're issued a citation, their option, the site, it's supposed to say on the citation that they can pay a reduced amount, but that's an admission of guilt. So, say that we issue, say that, I think it's a 25% reduction, I'm not positive. But say we issue, you know, someone parks on the grass, and they're given notice, they don't, they don't correct it, so they're issued a hundred dollar citation. They can pay $75, and that's, they're, they've admitted guilt, and they've, they've, they've paid their, their due. If it's, if it's seen again, now it's a repeat violation, because they've, and they, and they could be issued another fine immediately. They don't even have to say, we don't have to say, move your car. We say, you're now a repeat violator, and here's your next citation. And like I say, they could be issued citation after citation, and if they keep paying them, fine. You know, they, as long as they're paying their, as long as they're paying their citation, they can basically, you know, pay for the privilege to park on their, park on the grass. I mean, we can't stop them from doing that.
Who sets the dollar amount? Is that set by the county or, or?
The board does. They were, they're limited, you're limited by state statute, can't be more than $500 per incident. But.
It's not, three strikes, you're out?
No, I mean, you can, I mean.
Pay a $75 fine every.
Arguably, you know, arguably, if that's, if that's the fine that you've set.
Well, could we set it like 75 for the first offense?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
$100 for the second offense?
The maximum is 500, though. That's your maxed out.
Then double it up to 500, and leave it at 500 for every offense thereafter?
You could. And if they don't, if they're issued a citation and they object, they're, they get to go to the special magistrate.
That's fine.
I mean, I'm not looking to make money on this, I'm looking to have people respond and correct it.
Absolutely.
Right. Well, our, our main goal is to have people voluntarily do it. Because that's so much faster and so much more effective.
Exactly. But to do it and stop repeating. I mean, your repeat offenders are the ones that are up, so you have to make it bad for the repeat offenders. If somebody that just does it once or twice, and they're not a repeat offender, but you know who does it over and over and over again, you know who those people are. Get them in the pocketbook. Even the people that own, if they're renters.
And like I say, when it comes.
Readers in.
When it comes to renters, you can issue a citation to a, to the occupant, and if they, that, that doesn't have to be immediately given to the owner. So if you issue it to the occupant, then who's the violator? And say, hey, we're, you're in violation, and we're issuing you this citation. If they pay that citation, all that has to happen is we let the owner know, hey, your occupant violated a, violated our maintenance standards, and they paid admitting guilt. And so the, the owner's on notice that, you know, there's a potential for repeat violation. Because almost every lease that there is, you know, says that people have to comply with the rules and regulations of the, of the, of the district. So, the owner, the only reason the owner needs to know is because it may constitute a, a violation of the lease.
It sounds to me like we, we need to have, you, you need to sit down with our lawyer and with Chris, and you guys gotta decide what he can do, so he understands it. Because what he's saying, and what you're saying, you're not on the same page.
Yeah, we have a disagreement with the applicability of the state statute.
So, we have to come to a conclusion on how we want to approach this for the district.
Yeah, well, I'd say, the number one thing, in my opinion, is he is one person. He is the only, he's the only co, so we need more code enforcement officers designated by the district. And so what we need to figure out is how, what training is necessary, so that we can designate additional code enforcement officers.
All right, let's separate. Bob, do you got, are you okay with what we're talking? Because we're talking about taking your people and training them to do another, doing something else.
Some of the guys, yeah, that work for me are just fine, would be just fine at it. But I know that there are some that would probably have a little difficulty with it. Meaning that some of the guys on my crew are a little bit older and, like, kind of out of date with, as far as computers and stuff, because it takes a little bit of computer knowledge to do what Bob does.
No, we're just talking about them going around and, and seeing things, and reporting them.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but then you're saying, everything we find, we take to Mr. Brumfield? And in that case, in that case, we're gonna overwhelm him really fast.
And that's not what we're saying. So we have to, the, the code, the, if we're going to use security, the security people would have to be trained to issue citations.
Oh, to issue citations?
Correct. Because it has to be the, first of all, they have to be designated as a code enforcement officer. That code enforcement officer, it has to be his personal investigation. So, someone can't see something and then go back to Bob, because then Bob has to, and say, oh, Bob, I saw this, and you can issue the citation. No, Bob has to, the, the issue, the person that issuing the citation has to personally observe the situation. That's the way the ordinance is written.
Okay. Right now, Bob's already trained me, and I do that right now, okay? I mean, if it's, if it's an urgency, or when he's on vacation, or, you know, doing something, and he's not here, I take, I take the initiative when I see it, and it's complained to me, I will, I will write that incident up, and I will, I know how to do it on his computer, and actually serve it to them at that point.
But you do it when it's complained to you?
You're doing it on a reactive basis, not proactive.
Well, in some cases, in some cases. But I know some of the areas where we have the problems, and when I see that, and Bob's not around, I take the initiative and I'll write it up. And then it's, I leave it in the folder on his desk, so the next time he comes in, he sees that, that it's been written up.
Out of your nine people, how many you think are qualified to do what we're discussing?
Um, two, probably half of them.
Half of them? Four and a half?
That would be good.
That'd be a good start.
That would be wonderful.
That's a good start.
That'd be a good start.
All right, let's try this. If you would, give to Bob the list of four people that you think are capable of dealing with this.
Okay.
And who would be willing to take on the responsibility. Then, let's figure out, between you and Chris, figure out what training they need to get to qualify them to do this job. Once we get that done, then I still would like for you guys, for you to sit down with David and Chris, and make sure you're on the same page as to how, what a violation is, and how we're gonna deal with it. So that we're all on the same page. And then, come back to us and say, here's what we got, and here's what we're doing, and we're ready to go.
And we understand that that might take more than two weeks.
Oh, yes, yes. I mean, you're gonna have to tell, you'll have, Chris, you'll have to say, I mean, it would be great to get this done by July. Because you're talking about training, we're talking about, and there's other things on the plate that we have to also deal with. But if we can get this maybe done for July or August, and go forward from there, I think it'd be great. What do you think?
I, I think that's something that would, would definitely help, is if we had another code enforcement officer trained. But I don't know about being done that quick. First of all, most of the training classes that are offered are full for months. The, the Florida Association of Code Enforcement offers classes, or certification levels, they're a week long, and they have a test, you have to pass the test to pass the class. And they're usually in different Orlando, Fort Myers, Fort Pierce, they're scattered all over the state. So, until somebody go in there and staying over the period of a week to take the class, classes are all day long. They usually cost about $400, $500 per class. There's, there's three basic classes, level one, two, and three. There is a officer safety class, which is for, and then there is a professional class, which is writing a paper, you have to be a code enforcement officer for about five years to get that. But it's not a quick thing. You know, it, it's, and I don't know that we could do it. What we, the, the first place to start would be to identify somebody that's willing to do it. Most of his, all of his people are part-time except for Bob, which means they may work one or two nights, two, two days a week. He doesn't have any full-time employees other than himself. And we really need to have a full-time employee to be designated as another code enforcement officer. And the only one that that is, is Bob. And he's been trained somewhat, he hasn't been to any of the classes, but he, he's, he knows how to, to do, go out and send out a warning notice, he knows that.
Question, when you say not trained, so he's not certified, so he really can't legally issue a violation notice?
He's not designated by the district as a code enforcement officer. So, you know, in my absence, he could, he could do it. But the warning notice is not a legal document, it's not a threat of a fine. It's just a warning saying, you're doing something illegal, or doing something that's not in, in following one of our ordinances.
Sure. And the code enforcement officer who wrote the citation would be the one that would have to appear with the magistrate.
Correct. If I were to issue a, a notice of violation, send out a war, a notice of hearing, and go to a lien process, I would be the one that would present that to the special magistrate. When Phil Lockhart was here, he was able to do that, because he had been through the classes, I think he'd gone through two classes. And he was designated by the board at the time to be a code enforcement officer.
Chris, could, could you get, find out what the minimum requirements are to be declared a code enforcement officer, and what training is required, the timeline that we possibly do, maybe through a junior college, or, because right now, I, I don't see us getting where we need to go.
No, and like I say, I, I would agree that, that a lot of that, that was just discussed, is required if you're going to be a county code enforcement officer. But the codes that we have the ability of, to enforce are much less than what the county does. And I think that the district would have the ability to train its personnel to enforce district codes. I don't think they'd have to go through state certification or anything like that in order for the board. Because I say, the, the ordinance is very clear, the board has the ability to designate code enforcement officers, period. So, I mean, arguably, if a code, if we were to train a code enforcement officer, and that officer were to issue a citation, and the, the violating party were to go to the special magistrate, they could argue, that person's not qualified. That, that's a, they could absolutely make that argument. That would be up to the special magistrate to determine. So what I'll do is I'll have, I'll have a conversation with the special magistrate, who's Mark Bree, that's who we use as our special magistrate, and I can find out from him what qualifications, you know, in his opinion as a special magistrate, are necessary to be able to issue citations. And I can get, you know, some sort of a statement or something from him.
I don't think the dis, that's, you know, that's district, would be a description of, job description, what, that would be part of that, as a code enforcement officer. And I don't think that that's defined in, in the job description now, that they have to be certified at any level. With the county, they recommend being let, certified at the first level, within a year's period. I don't think that we have that written in anything. The, to be a code enforcement officer, you don't need, it's not required to have the training. That's not the, that's not the point. What the, the, the training does is makes you more efficient, and, and instead of just spinning your wheels over something that you don't know about, that gives you the knowledge of knowing how to do it. That's what the, that's what the certifications are for.
Can't you teach them that?
I can, I can teach them a lot of things, yeah, but they, they learn so much more going through the classes. I, I have no problem training somebody. That's not.
So, we can actually train code enforcement people to do the job. Yes, I can do that, yes. But that, well, it took a long time to get there, didn't it?
I, I think, just to interject, President Brooks has said, you guys should get together. I, I, I think it's clear of the four of us here, how we stand, and we want, we want it done better. And, and you guys all know that, so we need to start someplace. So, let's start. Let's, let's try to get all this, meet with the magistrate, do all that stuff, but.
If you don't have the right people, or they don't have the hours, and they don't want more hours, then we should just kill that thought right away.
Yeah.
And go out and hire somebody. Okay, so you're, just so I'm clear, I guess I don't understand, you're saying extra time? Bring in security people for extra time to do?
No.
No, 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 they just need to be trained.
When they're driving around, surely they can look and see if there's any violations. That's what I'm.
Glad to do that. During the summer months, we can probably do that. But during the, when the snowbirds and all the other people are here, Bob gets a complaint, he can have it written and done, 20 minutes. I can't. I can get a complaint, I can sit down at the desk, be called away from the desk, to do whatever, come back to the desk, type two more lines, be called again to remove from the desk. I may not get it done in a three or four hour period, just because people are calling me away from.
Where's all your people?
I'm, I'm the only one there when I'm there.
In the winter?
In the security, there's only one person on per shift. Year-round, there's one person on, security per shift. And the thing is, when Bob's not there, sure, I can sit down and do it, but I may not be able to do it in 10 or minutes, or whatever it takes him to do it. It's gonna take me long. So, if you want to designate more time and bring somebody else in, that's what I'm saying.
I think there should be one, in, in, my opinion.
Okay.
Security, you run it. You should have somebody running the, you should have somebody on shift all the time, other than yourself. I mean, that's my, I don't know how you do it.
I agree with you.
Well, and the same thing with you. I mean, for God's sakes, we're trying to help you guys do the job the best you can.
I agree with you.
So, it sounds to me like you guys don't want to.
No, I see, I think we're in, we're in, we're starting the budget process now, and based on this conversation, that's what, that's what needs to occur, is we need to budget for additional security and/or code enforcement, combination.
Absolutely.
Sounds like it to me. Anybody disagree? And then I want to, I want to properly enforce both security and code enforcement. That's all we're looking to do here.
Because the, I think it is, it is entirely possible that the, whoever is driving around in security would have two forms in their vehicle. A, a notice, a warning notice, and a citation notice. Those two forms, they're gonna issue one of the two.
This is outside of you. You could be the second guy driving around the neighborhood. It shouldn't be just you, and it shouldn't be just you either. That's not fair to you guys, and it's not fair to the people living in the district.
I agree, but we are living within our budget, and, and we could allocate more funds, I would be more in agreement with that.
I want to get it right.
Okay.
That's all I'm looking to do. All right.
Well, it's, it's just not, President Brooks, it's, you can tell, it's all this, you know, we, we want it done, and, and you gotta start someplace. And I don't care if it goes bad, just try something.
Well, we, we want to have it done right, too.
Yeah.
As an employee, I'm just as frustrated as you are about some of the things that I can't address.
So let's start this way, then. Because budget conversations for the district are coming up in a month, I think, right? Why don't you two guys sit down with Chris, and decide what you need from a budget standpoint to properly run your departments? And then, we go to this second step of training whomever we need to train, and equipping whomever we need to equip, and just get it done and go forward. Is that possible?
Yes, we, we definitely can work on that.
I know it's different than in the past, but I have to tell you, as, as I think Mr. Gilpin quoted last time, times are changing.
Absolutely.
We need to do things better.
And, and I know it's, in Bob's case, probably, it's, he's got a, he's got to do work in between my phone calls about my neighbor's music, you know, so I understand that you get called a lot, but, and I'm one of them, that's calling.
So you know, it's not a reflection on you guys, you, you're one person, I don't know how, how the heck you think you can do it, and do it correctly.
We work very hard. I bet you do.
And if we, if, if we don't get it done and done right, then it's our fault, not yours. And we're trying to help. But, you know, that's. But, you know, that's, tell us what you need and then we're trying to help.
So we'll follow up on this conversation when we do the budget presentations. When you guys are ready to present the budget for the district, obviously, that will be part, you guys will participate in that. And you'll explain to us what, at that point in time, what you think your needs are. I understand that we're thinking about hiring a lot of people. And I understand we're thinking about spending a lot of money. But you know what? We haven't been spending all this money in the right places. That's our problem. We spend lots of money, but not necessarily where we should.
That's right.
And that's gotta be changed. And part of it is supporting code enforcement and security. And then when I say I, I mean we, the board. So I just go on the record with that. Does anybody have any questions for either of these two gentlemen?
Yeah, I think. On your, on the, uh, security department call. At the end of that log, you said the supervisor's called. Does that mean you were called during that time? That's, I don't get paid on call, but I get numerous and, and every, and now it's increased more even since Mike left. Because Mike got most, a lot of those beforehand. But now a lot of those people have my number. And the thing is, I come into work at six o'clock in the morning and I get several calls between 10:00 PM and six AM from people with ridiculous things that could wait till morning, you know?
That's a lot of work.
Well, a lot of those things.
A lot of interruption of sleep is what it is.
Yeah.
While, while I got the two of you guys up here, somebody called me the other day. I'm not even sure who's, who would take care of it, about all these companies being in the district soliciting, trying to solicit businesses for roof repairs and window repairs and screen repairs.
President Brooks, I can't tell you how many people we've thrown out here.
So you guys have?
Yes, and the sheriff's department is assisting us because they have a fraud unit now actually working that comes in suddenly rather frequently.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I can't tell how many of the people we've asked to leave, that they can't go door to door. You have, I, it's uncanny how many we've thrown out here.
Oh, I mean, well, somebody happened to call me on the phone the other day and, and was a little upset. I think they actually called you, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so we're doing the best we can as far as that goes. I know it's a challenge, because you got to identify, which is not always easy.
We're doing the best we can under all circumstances.
All right, I think we've kicked this around enough. Any questions for these two gentlemen? Are there any public comments pertaining to any of this conversation? Then we will revisit it when we do the budgets and we'll start at that point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you both, for that part at least. Okay. Add-on items. None petitions and communications, none. General counsel report.
Not a lot. Uh, Chris and Amanda and I met with the bondholder on April 14th. They're wanting to move forward with a large number of foreclosures. We think we've identified, we got a, we got a quote from a local attorney, Cliff Rose, on a, a per foreclosure basis. But after meeting with the bondholder, they have their own attorney who is capable of, of doing all the foreclosures at once, which presents us with a little bit of a budget issue. But we think that we've got the ability to work that out. The bondholders agreed to afford some funds if, if necessary. So we're probably, I think by the next board meeting, Chris, we'd have a proposal regarding. Yeah, we've got it, yeah, we've got something, so, but we, I think what's, we'll, we'll bring it before the board for the, the next meeting so that we can finalize everything, but as far as moving forward with those foreclosures.
How many homes was that again? Eighties?
Seventy-nine, I think.
A hundred, I think it's a hundred and, over 125 properties, but I think 75 differ, 75, 76 different owners. So it'd be 75 to 76 actual lawsuits that would have to be filed, so.
I assume this will be put in the budget?
Well, we have, we have some, we have some stuff budgeted now. Yeah, we have some stuff budgeted now. And like I say, the, the, the bondholder is in agreement that, that once, that if the, the proper, after the foreclosure process is complete, these costs are the first things that are recouped. So in all, I mean, it, the worst case scenario, it's a cash flow problem where we have to, you know, but the, the money will eventually come back to the district.
Anything else?
Unless there's questions, that's all I really got.
General managers' report.
Just.
Go, I'm sorry.
Anything on, where, what's the status on the meters? Arbitration, et cetera, et cetera.
Uh, yeah, Mr., I'm meeting with Mr. Rhodes this afternoon to get an, to get an update. We have, I think, three, four different lawsuits that he's, that he's handling. But my recollection is that his, the plan is to amend our pleadings. The, Mr. Laconi filed a complaint. There was a motion to dismiss filed, and rather than have a hearing on that motion to dismiss, since, you know, Mr. Rhodes is taking over, he's going to amend the complaint to address those concerns. That's going to be the next step, and I'll be discussing that with him this afternoon. But as far as a timeframe, it ain't gonna be anytime soon.
Any other questions from the board? Public comments? General managers' report.
I remember things here, just mentioned the, a large amount of safety equipment we got, and that was related to the insurance report we got from our carrier. But I have a whole list of things that we've done since then that we've ordered and we're getting first aid kits and fire extinguishers put in the vehicles. We've taken delivery of cabinets for flammable, paints, things like that, racks to hold the acetylene. It was just a number of safety concerns. And all those items have been addressed by the staff and, and any of the parts that we've ordered have come in. So eye washes, it's just, just bread and butter, safety type equipment. And I think you'll also see us in the budget this year, because when you look in our budget under each of the departments, there is no line item for safety equipment. There probably should be. It doesn't have to be a lot, but just to recognize what that is. Continuing to move forward with our stormwater and wastewater facility plans. We have Rural Water Association working on the wastewater plan and pulsed in on the stormwater plan. Plan to bring that to the second meeting next month in a public hearing format. Board can review, approve any changes. And then we send that plan off to the DEP. They have 45 days to review it, and then it moves into their queue for funding at their August meeting. And we're looking at $5 million for stormwater and $10 million on the wastewater side. And again, you don't have to commit to spending any money until an agreement comes in front of you, and that's when the rubber will hit the road with the interest charges and that. We're continuing to work on the rate case. I know people are concerned about the hailstorm. We've done a significant amount of work documenting and taking pictures of the damage that we have, including fallen trees on the golf course and itemizing the labor and materials it took to repair the greens. I also have a professional working with me that did drone photos and photos at no cost. And when the insurance adjuster comes in, which will probably be next week, we'll have a whole menu to go over with him, pictures to hand them, a whole list. And we'll accompany them to make sure they don't miss anything, so.
What kind of deductible do we have?
$1,000 per incident or per building area. So the community center and the connections here are $1,000. The office is $1,000. The maintenance facility is $1,000. Now, the outline and attendant buildings, you know, like our gazebos and things like this attached to this property come under that $1,000.
Okay.
And we, and we really don't know the extent of some of the damage. We know we had, we've had air conditioning soffit hit, roofs impacted. But once the adjuster gets up there, too, and then he'll make the determination and estimate what the repairs will cost.
Okay.
It, it's considerable. I put something in here, too, because we got a call on Sunrise Avenue about some dead trees and the resident was concerned about them falling over during a storm. And I just had it, our forester go out there and he wrote a little one-page report. I sent it to the resident, but they basically said, yeah, hurricane could knock it over, but it doesn't look like it's gonna hit their house. And there was one tree that's pretty close, but it's in the county right of way. And the county flagged it and they're gonna come out and remove that large tree. But I told her we weren't gonna do anything about it and said, you know, if, if every person who lived along a preserve or a golf course where there are trees called and you want me to pull trees out because something might happen, I could spend our whole budget on that. But that's just the way we handle it with it, and I haven't heard anything else. And we had a couple depressions over on Myrtle Beach related to septic tank lids. And a guy stepped in one hole and went all the way down. You could see the top of his lid where it had moved off his tank. And of course, all the soil now went into his tank and created a little sinkhole. And unfortunately, the way some of those lids are, they just aren't secured that tightly. And after a while, a mower's going over it, it can move them over a little bit. And also unfortunate, because the homeowner said, well, it's yours, come fix it. Said, no, it's your system, go fix it. So, but that's just one of those things that people can get hot about. And the fact, that's one of the things about those low-pressure tanks, you know, the systems. They're cheap to put in, fairly cheap to operate, but they're a maintenance nightmare. I mean, we have people calling us all the time on these pumps that go bad. We're, we're out there changing pumps for them and providing a warranty and getting involved in it on a house-by-house basis. It's a, it's a tough situation. So maybe cheaper on the front end, but on the maintenance side, on the back end, it's not any cheaper. And hate to say, we still had a little delay in getting that drain field put in on number five deer. But they called me yesterday and said they'll be out Monday. And I wish in some time you could say, well, you know, I'm gonna get someone else to do it. Well, they're all backed up. And this company's not even taking work for pump out some drain fields now for anybody, because they're backed up several months and they're getting more people annoyed by saying, well, come do the work, but they aren't showing up, even like us. We put that work order into them on, you know, the end of March. I'm sorry, March 2nd is when we contacted them. Well, now we're in 22nd April, almost 60 days. And I know the golfers don't care for the portlets out there. A week or two is one thing, you know?
This weather's not a real pleasure.
No, but hopefully they, they will be out there Monday. And one lesson I learned, I'll never let the, the companies pull the permit, because it's taken them several weeks to do it. And it's about a 20-minute exercise to fill that form out. It's actually a little easier for us as property owners, so. But that's all I have today.
Okay, I, any questions for Chris?
Yeah, I have one, Chris, and I don't know if you can answer it, but electrical box, one of the people down on Matanzas, it's sunk. Do we do anything about that or is it just, it fills with water? And I guess they've had no problem, but I think they're worried about. I mean, it's, it's two, two feet deep.
We can send a letter to Duke with a picture, and I've done that on a couple others and followed up with them, and so far, they haven't fixed it. But I could certainly send Duke a letter and picture and say, hey, this is getting flooded with water.
Okay, so they should deal with Duke?
Well, they should, is it their property that the box is sitting on?
I, I don't know if it's an easement or not. I would assume it's an easement, but.
Yeah, easement on their property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would probably be more effective if they called them.
Okay. I just want to tell them something, that's all. And, and it's probably not what they want to hear, but, you know, I just gotta have an answer.
And it's hard to compel Duke to come in and do anything on a fast basis.
I mean, you, I wouldn't, if, if you told me that, called Duke, I wouldn't do, I mean, it's just waste of time.
I do have the engineer's contact information that handles it.
Thank you.
Anything else for us? I would like to see, you know, you gave us that, you bought all these supplies based on that, that public risk report that was done, the pictures. Have you also addressed the needs in the pictures, corrected those?
Yes.
Can you give us an update at the next meeting?
Sure.
Just where we are on that? If anything still needs to be done or were done?
Yeah, and, and most of the things that we needed to do from a staff standpoint, they, they were doing. The staff was why we were ordering that equipment. So almost every, every thing that they mentioned in that report, with the exception of fixing the dock out here, has been done.
Okay, good. Any other questions from the board? Any questions, public questions or comments? Okay, code enforcement report.
Well, I, Bob Brumford, code enforcement officer. I, I feel like I've already given three or four reports, but last month, and I don't have the figures with me. I apologize for that again, but we had, I, I think we sent out 192, 92 violation notices or warning notices for violations. Some of that was signage that we picked up. I don't know if it's on that report or not, but I picked up probably about in the neighborhood of 65 signs so far this month, where they're just putting them out on the corners, saying hail damage, roofers, whatever. You know, and if you go out into the county anywhere, just about every street corner you come to has got four or five signs. If you drive around in here, you'll see very, very few signs that are not on private property. So that's, that's another thing that we do that, you know, that's not really in, in the know.
What constitutes a sanitation violation?
If they have trash, things like that. There's a couple of different things. There's an accumulation, which is where they just have stuff piled up, construction things, boards. The sanitation would be more garbage.
What, what is the difference? What, has parking violations issued and parking, or violations issued and then violations complied?
That's the ones, when they send them a warning notice, then they park on a prepared surface.
No, no, Fred, the, the difference between violations issued and violations complied? What is the difference? Because most of your numbers are all the same.
Yeah, well, see, what happens is, most of the time, people, when they get the, the warning notice, they take care of the issue.
So when there's, when they haven't taken care of it, that's where you see discrepancy in the numbers?
Correct.
So like, for example, sanitation, it was in February, you had violations issued 25, violations complied 23. That means two people did not.
There was two people that did not in that period of time, but they did. And it might have been because they got the notice towards the end of the month and they didn't, didn't take care of it before the next month. But that, that's, that's what that means, yes.
Okay.
Like I said, most cases, people do what they're supposed to when they find out that that's, they're not doing it.
And it says properties brought before the special magistrate. That was what we were talking about?
For the fines, a lien.
But it says for last year, 2021, total year was only three.
Yeah, we had three, three properties that we had liens against for high grass. We haven't really had any problems with high grass yet because it's been cold and we haven't been getting any rain.
I mean, it just doesn't seem like there was that many that went to that extent, which is good.
Most people are, yep, especially with the grass. That's really gotten a lot better.
Okay, any questions for Bob? Any public comment? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Community services report. Ariel.
Good morning supervisors. I sent out last week a pretty lengthy written report. I think the easiest thing to do from that point, that would be everything I need to cover. So are there any questions specifically related to what was sent out in that report?
Any questions from the board on this report? I have a question.
Okay.
If, if you read the update on the shuffleboard courts, it sounds like because we can't get Marmont Construction to come out and look at it, we're saying it's okay and not worry about it.
Well, we haven't gotten, Drew, you can probably help me there. So we've reached out a couple of times with no response. At this point, I don't know that there's anything that can be, that should be done. It's hairline settlement cracks. At this point, it's not something that's affecting play. I, I don't even know that.
I mean, it's only two years old, right?
Yeah, Drew Jones, pulsed engineering, for the record. It is only two years old. I believe our regular warranties on everything stated in our, it's just a year, which I'm not saying that's a, that's not an excuse for them not to come out and look at it. Realistically, if you look at any slab board in Florida, they're all gonna have settling cracks somewhere. And unfortunately, they go right through the middle of the play area. I don't know that there's, I don't know there would have been any way to completely prevent them unless we spent a fortune trying to, like, put down 12-inch thick concrete.
Bob?
I don't know there's a cost-effective way to completely eliminate all just settling cracks. I do know they have rebar in almost all of the concrete. It was, it was a design build, so they provided the design and it was to normal standards. It was, it was a design build, so they provided the design and it was to normal standards for this area. So I don't know, I don't know that there was an actual design flaw, I just think it's, I think it's just normal settling. The only thing I think we could do to address it would, it would probably end up being resurfacing and trying to address the cracks was like a specialized.
I'm not looking to resurfacing, I just, I, the reason it even came to my attention was from a, from somebody who lives in the district.
Okay.
So somebody noticed it other than, I don't play shuffleboards, but it was noticed by somebody.
Right, and I went and looked at it and it, there's no, there's no vertical separation between the concrete, it's still all in line. I do know, like it's Ariel said, she hasn't had any complaints about any, anything affecting play and that's where we need to, I guess, keep an eye on it.
We actually, yeah, and just to add to that, there was a tournament, a shuffleboard, like tournament, not that long ago, maybe three weeks ago or so, and we actually got nothing but raving reviews and written thanks on how wonderful the, the facility and the courts were.
I guess, I guess my concern is I don't want it to get bad to the point where we have to resurface it, or we need to resurface it.
Correct, and I think there, I believe the paperwork, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, I think it's either a five or 10 year resurfacing life that they recommend to come in and get it resurfaced. I know it's maintenance free, the actual surface is on the shuffleboard, but it's not, you don't, you still have to maintain it, it's just an extended interval, so.
I mean, I'll, I'll go with what you guys are saying, but I want you to watch it closely. I don't want to have this $40,000 come back at us in two years and say, we have to do it. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll definitely keep an eye on it and obviously, if we get any complaints about it, then that, that it's affecting play, then that's clearly changing the game a little. But as far as the settlement cracks, I just don't know that, like, like Drew said, without resurfacing, which would be unnecessary in my opinion at this point.
Right, and if, if it is, we can, we can probably try to reach out to, I think it was Nitty?
Ninety.
Ninety. We can try to reach out to them and verify the actual interval that we're supposed to maintain it, just so we have it in the budget, because I'm sure it's gonna be coming up. It's either, either gonna be coming up in the five year, if you have to do the five year plan, we might need to make sure we have some monies in it. And at that time, whenever it does get resurfaced, they can act, they should be able to address it, assuming it hasn't moved vertically.
Okay, all right, we'll let that go. Anything else for Ariel?
So one other update, and I, I know I mentioned it earlier, but just because it's highlighted on here, because the number wasn't completed by the time I sent this in, we do have the 186 trash cans that have been requested to be picked up. So I left that TBD because this was done before that dead light was, so.
I have a question on the tennis, the pickleball courts. Have we put, have we put the bid out? Are we, is the, I mean, I can't find anything on the website, so obviously I'm not capable.
We had a third vendor coming out this morning that was coming over to put the bid together, so we have three vendors.
So it's been six weeks that we, since we initially talked about this and we still haven't put the bid out, which is going to be another, how many weeks after we put the bid out before it comes back?
We're getting bids from three vendors instead of our.
Oh, we do it?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have to go through the bid process, we're just getting the, we're doing to the purchase policy, we just get three vendors because of the, the dollar amount. We only have to go out the bid if it's over, yeah, something like, yeah, something like that, so.
If it's over what?
It's over 100,000 professional fees or 250,000 for construction. State statute policies will differ from anything over 25,000, you want to get out. You want quotes on.
I, I guess I'm confused in that we used to do it a certain way and then we're making changes and most of us don't know about those changes, do we?
I don't.
I don't think it's different.
It's not different.
It's three bids on the project.
No, but I used, we used to do, go through a process and put it on the website and issue.
I think you're being a little RFP.
First question for us.
Huh?
It's just a little different.
It's just a little different, but we, if we're gonna do something different, don't you think everybody should be on the same page?
I think it's the dollar amount, is it not?
The dollar amount can dictate.
Can dictate the RFP, not everything has to go through that process.
But anything over $25,000, we used to put on as a, as an official bid, did we not? It was 25 grand.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's my, I'd have, yeah, I'd have to go back and look, but I think that's what it is, that's what it sits at.
I don't know where 100,000 came from, I've never heard that number before. We're doing a lot of things that.
What doesn't say bid is this quote, three quotes.
If we're gonna change the way we do things, I suggest you get partners. I don't know how else to tell you that. So there were three bids out and they'll be back when?
We'll get them this week and it has to be, and it's about three weeks, about to get the vendors out because those people, like everybody else, they're just busy.
So we selected the vendors to bid, is that what we're doing now?
We've got names of people that do it, will come in because nobody really does it here, except for Sarasota, we're able to play from the bid vendors.
So we don't open it up to the general public anymore, we just select the bit, the people that we want to bid on it and then they go and bid on it.
We selected three of the larger court firms that do this work on a very regular basis.
Want to talk about community newsletter now or later? I mean, I mean, you all see what she proposed for a community newsletter, it dramatically changes from what we've done in the past, you guys have any comments on it? Do you want to just proceed on it?
It's a better form of communication, I'm for it, because I don't think it shows current these, doesn't give us very good.
So we want to tell her to go ahead with this?
I'm fine with that.
Beverly?
Yes, so just for clarification, I noted in here that we would like to start that in September. The reason for that is we still have some advertisements that have been paid through that time, so if it is okay, then if it's permissible, we would.
How many pages are you looking at?
For the, for the newsletter, for the new proposed newsletter, I would say probably between four and six. My hope is to be able to get, like I had mentioned in here, kind of, I call it like a, for more or less, almost like a paint by number kind of template. So, you know, when you look for the general manager's report, it's typically, you know, on page two or wherever, so that we can just kind of plug that information in and there's consistency in the formatting in the newsletter that gets sent out. What we will do, obviously, leading up to that time, up to that September date, is, is work on getting that completed.
I think we need for you to come up with the format that you want to try and produce, if you want. I, I think six pages doesn't work, I think you have, if you're gonna do a freestanding mailing newsletter, it's got to be an increment of four, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, and honestly, four is probably enough, but I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm ballparking that, yeah.
I'm not telling you to restrict it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ballparking that at this moment because I, obviously, it's a fictitious piece of mail at this point.
But I think, I think you gotta sit down and you gotta say, I mean, like you've kind of done here, but you gotta say, I want to have a page for Chris every addition, I want to have a page from the golf course, I want to have a page from the restaurant. I mean, this is going to go out to all of the residents, I think we've got to make it a meaningful, you should take a shot and it should be the cover shot that we use every time we go.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying kind of that paint by number, I use that loosely, but just kind of like a template that we can put it in so that there's consistency in everything that gets sent out, like you said, a cover. I, I don't have a rough draft of that at this moment because I wanted to make sure that this was even the right direction. So now, if the board is saying, yes, we think this is a good direction to go in, then that's something Kelly and I are gonna work on together, is putting this as a format and what this might look like when it's actually on paper, just like you said, like a cover page.
And you bring us back a rough draft.
If, if that's what the board wants, then yes.
I'm sorry, what?
She'll bring us back a rough draft.
Yeah.
Of what this, what this looks like.
I mean, not with specifics, page one will be this, page two, yeah.
But just bring us a rough draft so we can see it.
Exactly, plus you have to cost it out, because obviously, it's gonna cost money. So we're gonna go ahead with that and we'll hear back from you, tell me when. The goal is to get it out by September, tell me when you want to bring us a, a rough draft of your outline.
I would say probably June.
First meeting in June?
Maybe a little later in June, give us some time to get through it, cost it out, see how much it would come back, so that I can come back with a, a proposal of what it may look like and some cost estimates as well.
Second meeting in June. On the CPR class that you did for the public, did you get the response that you thought you would? Because that was the day after we had the hailstorm and I was just wondering if everybody showed or if we need to do another class.
Actually, both classes were pretty well full and stayed pretty well full. Of course, as luck would have it, it was right after the hailstorm and we had some AC issues in this building, so it was a toasty CPR class, but a CPR class nonetheless. Even despite that, you know, we had those issues, we didn't get any complaints as far as the event went. I, I don't know that we necessarily need to host another one right now, but I think it's something that we can put on the calendar for maybe even beginning of season time next year, like in the fall.
In the fall.
If most of the people showed up that were supposed to.
They did, and both of them were full classes, it, it was a good, it was a good turnout.
It was, yeah, it was.
Warm.
It was a little warm, but it wasn't that bad.
Not, not unbearable.
Yeah, I was just concerned over the timing because it was the day right after the hailstorm.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was obviously unfortunate, but the turnout was still good. We didn't have like a bunch of no shows or anything as a result, so it was a very good class.
Okay, anything else for Ariel? Any public comments? Security report. Bob?
We, other than having a, we had the normal amount of complaints this month, but we're probably gonna handle, as far as numbers, it'll be twice as many next month, just because of the amount of complaints we've had about vultures in here, trying to, you know, all the roofers and all that kind of stuff that are kind of preying on our citizens. And we've answered numerous and numerous complaints. The first, the first two days or the first four days after the storm, that's probably all I did, I just went from one to the next. So there'll be, there'll be a greatly increased number of complaints as far as next month, at the end of next month's report as compared to this one.
You know, I'm surprised, it really isn't that many complaints, it's only like 50 complaints you got for a month, is that, is that a normal amount or?
Yeah, actually, that's a little low.
A little low.
But some of the, I mean, some of the guys, I'm trying to encourage them more to, if they answer a complaint and when we get there, there's nothing, they still don't answer that as a call and we should be responding to everything as a call, just so we have the accurate numbers of how many calls we have. And I'm, I'm in the process of adjusting that now.
Okay. I mean, we just, what, what is your, the biggest complaint that you get? I'm curious.
Um, parking probably, parking in the grass.
What is our policy on parking in the grass? Are you allowed to or are you not?
No, except for the, I say, everybody's supposed to park on an prepared service with the exception of the invitees, I think the, like, it's, I think it's twice a, twice a month that they can, invitees can, can park, park in the grass. I'd have to double check it, but I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
Okay.
Are we talking grass that's like on the side, not in the grass, grass, but?
Any unprepared surface, so we have, like I say, we have a defined, we have a definition of what constitutes prepared surface, I'm pretty sure it's in the packet, if you want to review that packet, that is what constitutes prepared surface, so.
So when the nip and nippers go, come to my house and have to park across the street in that grass area, then they're in violation.
Correct, I mean, you said, well, let's say, that's an invitee, so that can happen, I think, twice a month. I think, like I said, I'd have to go back and review it, but if it's more than that, then yeah, arguably a violation.
Any questions for Bob? Do you put this online?
No, I, I email it to Chris and then he does it.
Okay, well, we have the new website, we are gonna post all this, so people can see that we actually do this, yes. Thank you, Bob.
All right. Thank you.
Utilities.
Good morning, Joseph Slivo, supervisor of utilities. During the month of March, we had nine new water and wastewater connections for construction. The meter inventory, we have ordered more cam strut meters, 50 more. We did order 56 of them recently, they are going out the door fast. We were using the meter idlers we discussed in the past, those are on backorder weeks out, so it's faster to get a meter for these applications than it is a meter idler right now, so that's why we've done that. Meter brass and supplies, the past few months, we have done a lot of work, we've seen a lot of spending on getting caught up on inventory. We are doing well right now, we do have some backorders pending, two of them will be delivered today, luckily. Right now, our main distributor of our brass is Ford. We can pick and choose what we receive, but then you have to change the application when you go back and put it in, so we try to keep everything uniform. Recently, I put on a backorder, I think it was around 20 U branches, which is a dual meter connection. They're estimating 12 to 20 weeks for us to receive those. That's pretty much just to back up the prominence home lots on Cortez. Just in case anything happens, we have to have the supplies to be able to keep these lots moving. So, that's that, the water treatment plant meter, the 12 inch, it was installed, actually on the 413 instead of 414. We did have a couple issues when it happened, when it was taking place. The CL2 pump, it does pump off the distribution flow, but the way the plumbing inside of the building worked, we did lose communication, but it still pumped as it's supposed to, so it wasn't a huge deal, but something that we had to be staffed there and kind of keep close eye on it. We did notice there was a couple issues with the setup of the distribution sensors for pressure. We, we figured out a way to bypass it, we got through it, we made it through, but turning the plant back on, we did have an issue, which you'll see here on the staff report that I did a request for KDL to, for $5,900 to put in a 12 inch valve fittings, four inch, four foot length of pipe. And it truly would have been a great thing to have before the project started because we did temporarily lose the plant for about a minute and a half, the interconnected opened up, air bubble flipped inside of the plant, lost full prime. Luckily, during the valve project, I did put in some blow offs, I was able to open off five or six of those up and sound like a whistle going off in there, but primed and we got going again. So this valve is to eliminate that, your distribution pipes inside the building are about six feet high and on the ground, another four feet, so there was a pipe and it did flip with the air bubble. This valve will eliminate that if that meter ever has to come out again, that's why I chose to go that route. So yes, as of right now, it's in, electricians are still working to put the wiring in and then we'll get that side of the plant opened back up and we should be good to go. So, the water distribution flushers are in for this year, the four. We have a good idea where we want to place most of them, right now, I'm kind of working between the property appraiser, GSI, and talking with Drew from Polston and just, we don't want to place any of these in where they're gonna be a problem in the next year or so with new construction. I want to put them in easements where they're gonna have good drainage, don't want to jump the gun basically and end up putting it in somebody's driveway in the future, waste money, so.
When do you plan to have them done by?
Uh, I would like to say we're gonna start relatively soon, I want to start with the one at the hospital, we'll pass the hospital just to keep that, that level there higher and then just basically figure out which ones we can do in-house and which ones we're gonna probably have to have KDL do, just in case there's any, you know, we just don't want to back ourselves up, the small crew with that type of project, so. But it is, is still moving forward, so we just want to make sure we do it correctly.
You got a question?
Where are you at on your staffing?
Uh, well, last week I called for interviews, the beginning of the week, I had a couple people hang up on me once I stated who I was and what I was calling about. I had a couple no shows, but Monday I was able to get three, three people in for interviews. Two of them are relatively good candidates, so they'll probably come in Monday for their pre-screens and their paperwork, so.
Why do people hang up on you?
Can't find good work right now. Can't find good work and I think, and this is kind of the platform that we use is indeed, and I think to keep their benefits going through the, the government, they apply and they're just applying to show they do that. And then you call them for a job and they're hanging up on you because they don't have to accept the job, they just keep collecting unemployment. So I truly think that's what it is, so, and that's why, if you see, we did, we did start posting on the Florida water pollution for operators, I'm not sure if that's the correct acronym, but, but still, we've, we've at least moved to that, so hopefully it'll work out. And it seems like it has, and also. And it seems like it has, and also with the new pay rates, I think that definitely opened the door for getting some better candidates in, so I appreciate that.
So those two would bring you up to where you need to be, or you're still short one?
As of yesterday, we had one quit, so, so yeah, we'll be short one, but we have three candidates.
Did they tell you why?
Yes, but it was just.
Okay, nevermind.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any public comments? All right, thank you. I did forget to put the golf, how did I forget golf? Mike, I apologize for that. You guys got anything that you want to talk to us about? My error.
Mike Lemire, Golf Course General Manager. Just a couple of quick notes before we get into some of our other stuff later here. Membership's still around 95%. We've added a couple since the last meeting, but it's still right at that number. It's probably going to hover about that, right around that number, might get to 96% here by the end of the summer with some summer memberships, but that's about it. Obviously, this time of year, a lot of the snowbirds are heading home, so our rounds have basically cut in half. So we're down to averaging around 200 rounds a day. We still have both courses open here for another month, and then it'll, it'll continue to, you know, decrease. We do have the New Hope Charity Golf Tournament tomorrow. That's a fairly large event that'll be on one course, one that we host every year. I did want to remind the board that we, Booker Fence will be here on May 11th. They're going to install some fence around the back of the clubhouse, just to kind of keep some of our areas clean back there and out of view. As Mr. Shoemaker said, they're going to be here Monday for the Deer Run Number Five Bathroom. Our Easter buffet was last Sunday. We served over 440 covers, which is very, very good. Service went well and had a lot of good compliments on the food. Lastly, as you see in front of you, as we typically do in the summertime, we usually reduce our restaurant hours. So in front of you is a proposed flyer that we will send out to the public, basically June 1st through September 30th. We're planning on doing what we did last summer, where Monday and Tuesday we'll be open for lunch, and then Wednesday through Saturday we'll be open for lunch and dinner, and then Sunday's just the pub service menu. We did offer cold sandwiches and hot dogs in the off period, so there's always kind of something there for folks to get when we service them. It worked out very well last summer. We had one of the, probably the best summer on record last summer, and it was very efficient with our staffing, with our hours. If the board has any comments or questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those, but that's kind of the big thing I have for you today.
Yeah. You got a, I have a question on this. You got a question?
What?
Go first.
I just want to say that while I appreciate your efficiency, it just aggravates me to no end that we don't get, we are only going to be able to use our restaurant Wednesday through Saturday.
For dinner, yes.
Year-round, and I, I understand why you're doing it, but, I mean, that, that's just my personal opinion, that's it. That's all I got to say.
Anything else?
Well, I have a question. I don't, if you read your, your flyer here, the bar's, the bar opens at 3:30.
Well, that's just bar service.
But I know that's not true.
Right, well, it's bar service only. The bar's open from 11 to.
So you made a flyer that's incorrect.
I'll have them adjust that.
So if you, you haven't sent these out, have you?
No, this is just a.
So Sunday and Mon, the first and the third listing should have the bar service, I assume it starts at 11 o'clock, right?
That's correct, yes.
And the pub menu? What's on the pub menu?
Well, we'll be going through those. It's just basically a reduced menu. There's a few hot items on there, cold sandwiches, but we'll, we'll be adjusting our menus going into the summer anyway, so this is just kind of our service hours. We'll have a, I'll be able to bring to you guys a copy of those menus as we adjust them going into summer.
Okay.
And the reason, I mean, to Beverly's point, the reason, I, I understand Monday, but why are we closed on Tuesday?
So basically last summer, we actually, by reducing our hours, we're actually able to really serve the same amount of food and people in a reduced time period, which makes it more efficient, which makes the operation more profitable.
So we're not having trivia all summer?
So this is, this is just regular hours, so outside of that, when we have special events, we can still do those on those nights. So the good news is, is when we do that, and that's basically what we did last summer, is most of our special events like trivia nights are on Tuesday nights, because those are profitable. So when we run those, we know who's coming, we have reservations. It's, we're very efficient to do those, so when we do special events like trivia, those are most likely beyond those Tuesday nights.
And are we going to bring hamburger night back on Wednesdays?
Well, it's going to remain, it'll remain as normal. It's, it's Wednesday night now, it'll remain normal as we go through the summer.
Can we get away from the buffet now?
The buffet is actually, I mean, it's made Wednesday nights a lot, a lot better, it's a lot more efficient.
A lot better for who?
Well, for every, well, in my opinion, for everybody. It gets, when we were doing it, I mean, originally it was always intended to be a buffet style, but when you have 150, 160 reservations all getting burgers, if you come in the restaurant, if you come into the kitchen side, it's, I mean, it's, it's not easy to serve that many burgers in a two-hour period in that style.
Most restaurants would probably close based on that kind of business.
Mike, have you seen my face since you started buffet?
Right.
The same.
That's fine.
I have a question on that. The Deer Run restroom, is that a suddenly job or is that an indigo? Are we doing that? It's a, that's a capital, okay. That's what I thought. Okay, okay, I just.
And the cost is about $700.
It doesn't make any difference. It's got to be done, it's just where the money's coming from, that's all.
The only comment I have is just a continuation of not running a restaurant. It's you're trying to run a restaurant for peak period and rest of the time, and your service is declining. I don't, just don't understand why you can't keep things going right. I heard just, just the other day that you asked for somebody to clean the table off at lunchtime, and it was told that it wasn't their station. I fired that person, you know, pardon.
Yes, so that person does no longer work for us, but we're also.
Had a whole bunch of them, what used to be good waitresses, no longer there. I don't know what's going on there, but it just keeps, you get it going right, and I was really starting to talk about how good things are going.
Right.
Just turn around, it's going.
Well, we're aware of a situation that we have recently addressed and.
Why do I, why do we have to continue to talk about it?
And, and closing it is not the answer. I promise you, I promise you.
Well, you're not going to need people, just don't get people going in?
Okay.
There are a lot of new faces at the restaurant.
Yeah, and yes, and there, as far as employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there, and there will be. I mean, you guys are aware of the current situation, of which we're trying to hire a new front-of-the-house manager to provide our service better than hopefully we have in the past, and, you know, we're going to work through that situation. Obviously, with that kind of turnover, people do come and go, but we're going to work through that as we do.
My other comment is to run, run the script. What, what about a restaurant manager that runs the restaurant?
Yeah, I've been having.
You can't have two people trying to do the same job, in my opinion. You got one side managing the cook side, you got one side running the front side, they don't talk to each other, they don't communicate with each other. The expediter don't delivers the meals, but this waitress has got to order them, and then we get forgotten.
No, and that's a very good point. That's a situation that I've had these talks with, with Mr. Rhodes and our National FNB Director, and I'm trying to navigate through that situation, just like you said. Just got to find the right candidate to do that. I do have a couple on my desk that we're working through, and I have the same ideas you do.
I hope so. I don't know what to say. We need a good, we need more than one manager. I mean, I'll tell you that. We've had this conversation, if you're open 70 hours a week and you have one manager, you can cover the place. And if you don't have a manager on duty, I don't think you're doing the job or maximizing your efforts, and to say that you're taking a bartender and making that person a manager so she, he or she can close up is just absurd. It's just not right. I need somebody to, to his, to Craig's point, to manage the, the place. You know, I still am waiting, I'll probably die before this happens, to have somebody come up and ask me how my meal is. We don't do that. And if I, if we don't do it for me as, as a board, as a supervisor, I know we don't do it for the general public.
How much upselling is going on? You want another drink? Here's your check.
Right, well, right now we have the opportunity to hire the person that will make that happen. Obviously, the previous person that was on staff, you know, as directed, did not make those things happen. So I'm excited for this opportunity to find that right person, and I spoke to you individually all about that situation, and, you know, like I said, I'm looking forward to, to moving forward with the right people. And as always, you know, we're only as good as the people that we have, so we're definitely trying to find, you know, the best people we can. As you can tell with every other business in town and all the other restaurants in town, we're all in the same boat. Everybody's looking for good people right now, and there's other restaurants that, you know, kind of do a lot of the similar things that we do. So, like I said, I'm excited to move forward, and it's just an opportunity for us to get better.
We're running out of time.
And we have Troon supposedly.
Correct.
Okay, why, so we have a, quote, big advantage of, over all the other restaurants, so that might, doesn't fly, because we're supposed to have a, a big pool to pearl the right people from.
Right. So in that situation, so with the, with the openings that we have, you know, those, those are advertised across our, the entire Troon family. Doesn't mean, we, we can't just say, you know, you're an executive chef and you live in Washington, that, hey, you're moving to Sebring. It doesn't necessarily work that way. They got to, they need to want to come join us, but we do, we do utilize that, and they do help us out, and, and they're the ones that are helping me coordinate the job search for the, for the people we have right now.
I'm just saying, and that's not my point. My point is you can't compare us to the other restaurants, because supposedly we have a bigger force behind us than the other restaurant does.
I understand your point.
Okay, thank you.
And I was at a facility not too long ago, they could seat just about as many as we can during peak hours and serve an a la carte without any issue whatsoever.
Is that the watering hole?
Yep.
I was there two weeks ago, it took us two hours to get our meal.
Well, I can tell you, I was there, God, it was a very reasonable period of time.
Yeah, it's fine.
I, I, I'm not comparing you to somebody else. I'm comparing you to the standards that I think you should be at.
Understandable.
And you ain't there yet. And you got to get there. I'm tired, I'm sure all of us are tired of having this conversation.
No, I, no, I totally agree. Like I said, like, we have an opportunity now to find the right person. Anything else?
It's got to change, it's got to get better.
Can we go to golf? I have a golf question.
Okay.
Okay, we had the LPGA Ladies Event coming in here, they made the 13th, 14th, and 15th.
That is correct.
Are our golf courses going to be ready?
Yeah, so we're obviously doing, putting a lot of work into them, the greens, we're going to go back through and we're going to do another heavy top dress this next coming week, and Jimmy can report anything further he's going to do. Mainly it's just the green situation that we're really looking at, so they're, they're definitely starting to heal up at a faster rate now as the temperatures go up. The hail damage is definitely really starting to heal up quite well. The aeration holes on turtle are mainly already closed up, deer is pretty close. I don't see the aeration holes, they, within the next few days should be completely closed up. I think there'll still be a few bad areas out there from, from the other damage, but as far as playability goes, I don't, I think we'll be fine. It's not going to be the ideal perfect situation like we would normally have, but I think the courses will be just fine.
Wow.
Do, do you have a number on how many other girls are coming?
I don't have a hard number right now. I believe it was supposed to be 60 to 80 in tee times, but I, I will find that out and let you know.
And they're playing deer?
They will be playing deer.
That's what you're telling me.
Right.
Yep. I looked at turtles, deers, turtles, greens yesterday, day before yesterday, and they seem to be healing a lot quicker than, than deers.
Yeah, and, and I, and I stated the same thing. I, it, I'm not, and again, Jimmy could probably report a little bit different than me, but I feel the same way. I mean, it is two kinds of grasses. I don't know if the mini vertes just responding a little faster than, than the champion, but I'd kind of noticed that same thing, but I'm sure that the champion's right behind it. But there was more, there was actually, the hail damage was worse on turtle. But they are really starting to heal up pretty quick within.
But wasn't Deer Run damaged well before the hail damage, and that's probably the reason it's going to take a little longer? Because deer was in terrible shape before it got hit by hail.
There, yeah, there was definitely a couple of greens that, that were not very good, but, I mean, I'll let Jimmy respond to that. If the hail damage was slowed down because of that, I, I don't know that answer. I think it's more just the type of grass, but that's my opinion. Yeah. Yep.
Good morning, again, Jimmy Murphy, Golf Course Superintendent. So you guys got the estric test, and I would be happy to go over them when you guys want to sit down and go through them. I think the biggest thing to look at is what we're still fighting there. I have pictures of the roots this week. Last week we had about a half inch, this week we got two inches of roots. The roots are going through the aerification holes, but they're not going all the way through the green yet because of the black layering. So, so we're, we're going to keep, that's the whole reason we want to keep airifying. So we're still going to schedule our three aerifications, and there's nothing that we can do to get them 100% better until we continue to airify. I don't care who you bring in, they're going to have to airify the greens then in order to correct them. And this goes all the way back to 2004 in that estric test, that was the last estric test that was pulled here. And if you look at it, it was all beginning around 2004 at that time. And it's just a matter of, and I've spoke with David Bell as well, and I think that we all hate aerification, but it's a necessary process, and there's no way to get around it.
Appreciate you sending the report. It was nice of you. I don't really care about the report. You've got till September to get it right. If you don't get it right, we'll have another conversation between us. That's it. I don't need.
And airify as much as you need.
Right.
I don't hate the aerification because I know what it does.
Nobody's telling you not to airify. Do what you, what you need to do to fix the course.
No.
So, exactly from 2004, but the same.
No.
It's indigo's fault.
I don't know if they were even here then.
No.
I don't know.
No.
Excuse me?
Just fix it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just fix it.
And I do have 500 more square feet of sod that we're going to pick up on Tuesday morning that we're going to patch the rest of the areas. The, the hard part with champion is that it comes out of Texas, but the areas that are left on deer will be patched next week as well.
You guys, I mean, 17 turtle, that's not going to, that's not going to grow. On the, on the circumference of that green, you're going to have to do something different than what you're doing, because they ain't going to come back. You can look at it and tell. The rest of the, the main part of the green is coming back very nicely, but that area, that circumference of about, what, 35, 40 feet? That's about three deep? Ain't, that's not going to come back. It isn't. So, I mean, you guys got to look and, I mean.
Well, we do. I mean, so I'm planning on opening up the practice area June 1st, so at that point, then I can strip the other green.
I'm just saying, some of these areas are coming back, but there's a lot of areas that still need something different.
Yes, sir.
That's all I'm saying. Let's talk about this while, we'll go a little bit out of order, this, I had asked for a plan for what you're going to do with golf closures during the irrigation. Instead of getting a one-page thing on what we're. Instead of getting a one-page thing on what we're gonna do during irrigation, we got this twelve-page calendar. I understand, I guess, do you guys have any questions on this thing that you sent you?
Oh, yeah.
I'll let, because I'll, you go first. Well, you, you guys go first, I don't wanna...
Well...
Is it all right to...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Basically, okay, I know what happened in April. Okay. So I started May, thinking, okay, let me look and see what's going on. And we saw something about bear, bear cutting the green. And I come to the very first of Monday, May ninth. We've got a ladies' inner club, but we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna bear cut the greens in front of the ladies.
No, sir, it's not going.
Well, that's what it says. We can't hear it at all.
Can't hear?
No. I thought I was funny loud.
Is it?
On May ninth...
Mr. Herrig.
It shows that we're gonna bear cut the greens on Turtle.
It does not say what time, I apologize.
And it says the ladies' inner club is gonna be there too, and I'm thinking, why are we gonna bear cut when we know we've got an event?
I'm not verticutting in the morning, I'm verticutting in the afternoon after the tournament.
It doesn't say that.
I understand that, and I apologize. If I need to start putting the exact time that I do it, then I will.
Don't start.
But no, I'm just saying, that was our game plan, is to do it after the tournament, to do them dry. We're always gonna try to verticut in the afternoons. Yes, sir.
But it is better to verticut in the afternoon when they're dry, and that's when we're always gonna try to verticut. I just, all I care about is, all these things that you're gonna do, they're fine. Are you, does this mean that we have to close anything, or is the courses both staying open during all of these procedures?
In the afternoons, we'll, we'll shut them down for three, a couple to three hours, so we can get in a gap and get them completed.
So there are course closings?
Yes, sir.
I would like for that to be noted, so we know when we're closing down courses and which ones. Right?
I've got issues with that.
What, what are we supposed to do, or when are we supposed to do it?
Then everybody else do it.
They, you...
They shut them down.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, they do.
Everybody does. All right, we're not gonna argue whether other courses shut down or not.
I do have this issue that starts in... Well, it starts in November, so I assume it continues to run. We're gonna block out till nine o'clock every day, so that maintenance can do the work.
Not every day on Mondays.
Well, I see the twenty-first, twenty-second, or twenty-first, twenty-eighth, or December fifth.
What are you?
Well, I started in November, that I see for sure. Well, in fact, it starts in October.
Yes, sir.
Maintenance block on the thirty-first...
On Mondays.
Yeah. So, you're not, I said, both courses?
No, sir, it's just gonna alternate every other week, each course. This is gonna give me a time to allow Mr. Herrig just to do the nintahine and do the light top dressing that we need to do.
Well, but you got nintahine, nintahine green doing it on days that you don't have a block. For instance, November fourteenth and fifteenth, you're gonna nintahine Deer, then you gotta block...
The blocks will be, I'm sorry, the blocks will be for top dressing. It says top dress. Yep.
It just says maintenance block until nine a.m., I just...
So, when we, when we put that on there, so...
Wait, wait, wait. Before we go any further with this, what I want, what I asked for is not what I got. Can we discuss what I was supposed to get, or we were supposed to get? When are we closing the course for irrigation? And how are we operating when something is closed? We, I still don't, I read your thing here. June, it says June twentieth, closed Deer Run Front Nine Irrigation Project begins. What does that mean? When does it stop? How far, I mean, come on, guys, I asked for something very simple.
So there's, there's notes on, there's notes on the bottom of these pages, so basically, you know, they'll...
How long, how long is Deer Run Front Nine gonna be closed?
Thirty to forty days.
Thirty to forty days.
Right.
The front nine.
So, and then, yeah, so the, the goal is to get to the back nine around the middle of August, August twenty-two.
So, are both nines gonna be closed?
Again, that's, that'll be tentative, because obviously, they could be ahead of, hopefully they're ahead of schedule.
Both nines closed, one nine's closed?
The front nine's closed.
Right.
That's why I put the whole numbers, those actual whole numbers are the way they're gonna go in order.
So this, they're starting at hole five because of the connection at the bathroom for the power for the satellites, rather than running it all the way from the pump house.
What is one get done?
One gets done right at the end. That'll be done in July to August fifteenth, it should be complete. And that's when they plan on...
Why did I say it's not identified as being done?
It just says driving, yes, you're right. Front nine should be completed August fifteenth.
And then hopefully we get... Hopefully, we get done by end of September.
That's the goal. And I will let you know that we had the, the valves, everything, trying to still get some of the parts, there's, it's getting trying. The pipe, everything's good, it's gonna be extruded on May fifteenth, but some of the cloy valves and stuff that, as many as we're getting, the manufacturers are having trouble getting them, so we've got delivery of a lot of stuff, but there are some issues with some of them, and we can't get a definite date when they'll be delivered.
I...
That's, that's...
You can't control the manufacturer.
I didn't say that.
On, on, on August the seventh, something's gonna be closed on Deer Run, right?
Yes, sir.
So how are we having a tournament on that day? On that course?
So the weekend, we've asked if we can have the weekend, if, so our goal is, if we have these, when we have these tournaments in August, is to reopen all thirty-six on the weekends when we have the large tournaments, and those are the only two that we're...
How can we have the tournaments if we're doing the irrigation?
So the fairways are gonna, not gonna be disturbed. The only big disturbance is gonna be when we run the main line. The big stuff is all gonna have to be trenched in. All the fairways is gonna be pulled in with a bullet. Anything under six inches will, will be pulled in. There'll be very little disturbance to the fairways. And we'll never be without water besides three holes probably for two days.
I would like to see something that even I could understand, which is one piece of paper, what's closing, when it's closing, when it's opening. I mean, you know, something like this intercept, or this email that I somehow got a copy of, that...
From Carl?
That, you know, one piece of paper, which, which has a plan here.
Right.
That's what I was hoping for, for these guys to see, and I don't know if this is still accurate anymore.
Yes, sir, that's, that's what this was generating.
This updated and given to these guys, so they know what's gonna happen, because it says here, I mean, it's pretty well self-explanatory, I don't need this, this whole thing. By the way, January is J A N. Not J A U, just a minor point.
Well, you can, that's Excel.
Yeah. Just a minor point. But anyway, just give us a simple outline form, fifteen, twenty lines on what the course closings are and what you're gonna do.
That's fine.
Then we can have a conversation as to the rest of this, because I think, to Craig's point, this needs to be cleaned up, and, and it has to be noted whether we are closing courses to do this stuff, or, or something of that nature. I think to have a plan like this, to prevent something from ever happening again, is a great thing to do.
Well, I mean...
I, I think it's gotta be to where us mere mortals can understand, and I don't think we can the way it's written.
Fair, fair enough.
Plus, I don't care about January, February, and March of this year. I care about January, February, and March of next year.
I've had these calendars, and I also have my cultural programs for the whole twelve months that we've always done. So, this, this was just something that I tried to incorporate, and something I tried to get with Andy to do as far as communicating when we have our tournaments and stuff, so I don't schedule anything on top of the tournament.
I mean, like, to Craig's point, you go to September nineteenth, it says Verticut Deer Greens Top Dress, and then it says right below it, Crutch Hawkins High School Invitational.
It would be in the afternoon. I understand, yes, sir.
I mean, to his point, if you read it, it sounds like you're working during the tournament.
I understand. That'll, okay. That'll never happen, I promise.
Well, so, I think we need a little bit more flexibility.
Sure.
So you're gonna give us an outline next meeting?
Right.
And then you can wait a little bit longer to do this. The outline on the, on the irrigation closing, I think, is the most important thing, because we're almost on topic now.
Yes, sir.
And I think what we wanna know, correct me if I'm wrong, is what closings are gonna happen based on the irrigation.
Okay, but I think that the board has to understand, there has to be some closers to get the job done correctly.
Yes.
Okay.
So, the only thing, the issue I have is it being closed till nine o'clock. I assume that's on the tee.
Correct, it'll be on the tee time course, so basically, and the other course would have a morning shotgun that does not fill up. So, so it's not a revenue loss situation, it just, it just stops from that one twosome that goes out Monday morning, which, when we looked through the whole calendar, was the best one to choose from, because there was, all the member groups were in the afternoon, so there's very little play in the morning right there. It's the best time to do it, just gives him another hour and a half just to get his work done, which is obviously very critical to having our course conditions. It, it really should not affect revenue hardly at all. It's just organizing the people.
You know what I need, you know what we need. Any other questions for him on this?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm not, just so you guys, I'm sure you've talked about it, you too, but, but people, with us not getting stuff we're supposed to, that you had mentioned earlier, if this goes on, do you have any plan for, if they can't get it, the equipment we need, and we're, will we be still working on it in October, November? The golf course?
As far as what?
The irrigation and stuff.
The parts that are missing for the irrigation system.
I mean, I'm just, just want you guys to, I'm sure you've talked about it, in case these parts don't come in, because it's been that way, that we're running two, three months behind. It's not your fault, but it happens.
I've talked to Andrew and Carl about every other day, so we made shifts, we, we got a different valve, it's the same kind of structure, it's just a different valve. So they're chasing it, Wesco's chasing it, Toro's chasing it every day to make sure, and we've got a pile of stuff at the shop already. I mean, we've got twenty-three pallets of material already at the shops.
Well, I just, I, the way things have been going, Jimmy, it's...
Yeah. Well, and that's, that's why they're, they're hustling every day to make sure that we get it. We have another delivery coming Monday, and like I said, we counted in, and we're, just it was, the valves was the issue, we have the valves now. It's just some of them are lingering, they were supposed to have been done in February, and they're, they've not been completed yet.
Yeah, well, see, and that's what I'm talking about.
It's a raw material.
That you have no control over, but you're gonna come to us and say, it's gonna be, you know, and that's the way it's been happening. Again, not your fault, but it's a...
Not acceptable.
Are you going to start the irrigation, let's go with just the front nine, without having all the material available to finish that job?
No, sir, everything should be here by June twentieth.
And if it isn't?
They have enough material right now to start, yes, sir.
You got enough to start, can they finish? Nine holes, with what material you have on hand?
To, today, I, we don't even have the pipe yet, so...
See, that's what I'm worried about.
The pipe, the pipe's gonna be done, extruded on the eighteenth of May. It should be, be, be delivered on June, the first week of June.
Do you have, if you're gonna start without having the material, then you're gonna, I'm concerned, you're gonna get halfway through it, you're not gonna be able to finish.
It, I don't foresee it being an issue, because they are in the process of manufacturing everything right now, it's just the timeframes and getting them all done. We do have enough to complete nine holes right now. By the time we get done with the nine holes, we're hoping to have everything here by June sixth, like the schedule is on there. Any other questions?
Only because you've sent this out, I do have one.
Yes, sir.
Mike, shows on the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth of August, that we have two hundred and fifty players that are gonna be on both courses. Are you closing both courses down for those three days?
Uh, that is the normal, that is the, the same tournament we do every year, that's the Saratoga event that we have, the two-day event that we have every year, where they play in the morning both of those days. And the Friday is the practice round, which, we might have to move around a little bit this year, but yes, that's the same two-day tournament we have every year.
But it's just the morning?
The, the course will be closed in the morning, yes, both of them.
I didn't see that on our side tournament list that we had, that we discussed.
Oh, I, I, I think that starts in the fall, that, the tournament list. Doesn't, I, I, I haven't, I'll have to look at that. I don't have a copy of that one.
That needs to be updated if you have...
I'll double-check that.
Also, I saw that we included in December the ladies' tournament. Is that a definite though?
That is a definite though.
Good.
Heard that this year, too.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
Any other questions for these guys on this subject?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no.
Nope.
Okay. Don't go way too fast. Any board com, any public comments? I, I'm gonna skip around a little bit, I wanna go to, to the equipment line F. You all got this, is there any comments on this? No? All right, I wanna tell you something. I added this up, it's over four million dollars worth of equipment. We are in sad shape. We have to have four million dollars worth of equipment on premises for anything. That's just absurd number. Ridiculous. I don't care if it's leased, I don't care if we own it, I don't care whatever it is. I counted, and I could be wrong, although I, I think there's, in the general fund, there was eleven gators. In the golf fund, there was fourteen gators. So we have twenty-five gators parked in our, I assume, shed at any given, I mean, that's what we own, or we're leasing, or what have you. Do we have twenty-five employees working on any given day?
I have fifteen, yes, sir.
You have fifteen?
Yes, sir.
We have twenty-five gators, so what are we doing with the other ten?
I don't have twenty-five gators, the street...
We have, I'm sorry, I, this board has twenty-five gators.
The street department has, I think, nine or ten?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
According to the list that I got. I, I, I gotta tell you, and I knew this was gonna happen, the list that was given to us are, it's, it's just a listing of what they are. I don't think any of us really know for sure what the usage is. Beverly may know more than the rest of us. I think we need to take this to the next level and divide it up and say, this is what we're using for, these actually cut grass, these are something else, so that we can actually look at it and see. I gotta tell you, we're throwing away money, in my opinion.
On the golf behalf, we did go through the inventory, and I sent it to Chris, what, Wednesday, Chris and Amanda, and went through. Some of those items that are actually showing on that inventory are, have been junked. They're just, they're older pieces of equipment that were here, and they've been scrapped, and we probably should do the same thing and go through the road department as well.
Yeah, I mean, I know we never talked, well, we did talk once upon a time about putting the two together, because they are actually all under the district's ownership.
Yes, sir.
And I still think we ought to do that.
I think we need to go through and do an updated equipment inventory and actually grade them as well, like I did with mine, Chris, as far as doing...
Let me ask a question. Excuse me. Who is in charge of the district equipment? Who's in charge of the district equipment? What we have? Who's in charge? George is not here anymore, right? So who is in charge of the district equipment? You are. Well, then I need for you to sit down with Jimmy and decipher what the district needs, so that we can make the corrections going forward. And if Jimmy can incorporate it under his lease agreement, so much the better. But I gotta tell you, we have way too much equipment. You just have to walk into the shed. It's overwhelming. And I need to take this, so I think we ought to take this to the next level. This is an eye-opener, it's $4.1 million worth of inventory?
I would like to go through it and update it and grade it all, and then put it back up for your review, because I'm not sure all that equipment, Chris, is still there as well. And Joey, the same stuff with you? I mean, I just think we need to go through and update our inventory.
We need it to be updated, because I know you're gonna come to us and ask for capital monies for a lease agreement. And I'm not gonna have the board even entertain it until we get our hands around this.
I'd be more than happy to help anybody, as far as the other departments go through it all and grade it, and probably need to just go through and verify all the serial numbers and model numbers and everything. And if there's something on there, then maybe we need to admit it.
I mean, somehow we have to figure out how the district works with the golf people and shares together for the district sector. 26 gators, it's just ridiculous.
Agreed. Chris and I will get together next week, and we'll go through it all. We have a budget meeting next week anyway, right? So we'll go through it again.
Okay. Does anybody wanna, I mean, I wanted to see what it was, I got to see. Do you wanna comment on it?
Only though, that the district and the golf department, I mean, we mow a lot of grass, and I'm not talking about on the golf course. I mean, this is a big property, so I'm not sure that you need 25 gators, but I think you need more. Let's look at the, when you get the real sheet back, let's look and see what we've got. But I don't want...
It's seasonal, I mean, when we're, in the wintertime, the, all the gators are out. I mean, there's times I don't have a gator to even go out on the golf course.
Yeah, but they make, the district makes.
Yes, sir, and I take one of theirs at that time.
That's what I'm saying. I think between us, we have more than we need. And we can't keep running, golf is over here, and the district is over here, because it's all under Sun and Way.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm trying to get to. So if you guys would do that and get back, any other, guys want any other comments on that? Any public comments on that? Okay, thank you, guys. We're now going to try and discuss the budget pre-planning process, if you guys are up for that one.
Not really.
Let's see if I can find where I put it. All right, so the idea at the last meeting was to try and come up with some numbers, to give some guidance from the board, as opposed to the people reporting to the board, giving us the numbers that they wanna work on. Consequently, or, you know, hopefully that avoids getting $4.1 million worth of equipment, that we don't know really what we have and where it is. So, we're trying to, I think a top-down approach is the way to go. I've got numbers, I don't know if anybody else has numbers. We'll let somebody else start, you wanna start? We'll take one category at a time. The golf numbers. What I was looking for there was just to give them either a dollar or a percentage goal, based on the numbers that were there. Anybody?
I was looking for a 5% increase.
Anybody else? Okay, I was, originally I was looking at 10, but I can live with 5. What I can't live with is the number now, because looking at, the number that I gave you on the sheet was based on January's profit. If you look at February's profit, they are now estimating, and this is their numbers, for a profit of $454,000, $455,000.
Well, it needs to be...
So if you wanna go 5% above that...
I'm saying 5% over...
Over that, that's fine.
Look like we're going to be there.
Anybody?
Profit of $400 and some thousand?
Yeah. They're projecting they're gonna do $455,000.
Okay.
What?
A profit, or...
You don't like that number? I mean, the number right now... Their numbers, not mine, in golf, they are... They are up $224,000, correct? Year-to-date actuals, the profit in golf right now is at $407,000. So they're estimating that they will do $454,000. I think they're gonna do better than that, but I think that to do anything lower than that would be ridiculous, because they're gonna achieve it. So I think, if you wanna go 5% over that as a goal for them, that's fine, that would be... Anybody have a calculator?
Just...
I don't have a calculator, will I need one?
5% over 485?
455 is what they're projecting.
Plus 5%? Be 470?
So I'd say $480,000 should be your goal for golf, in profits. As a goal, I mean, you have to come back and say, yeah, I could do it, no, I can't.
Sure. That sounds very reasonable. I just wanna remind the board that we're, although that's through February, and we actually did very good in March as well, but April is gonna be not as good as planned, but...
Well, then you're fine.
That sounds very reasonable.
Then you should be fine.
I think they'll probably wash them, that probably sounds fine. I'll let you know, though, after I work all the numbers.
So I would say 480 would be a good number. Restaurant. Anybody got a number there?
I said minimum, minimum of 10%, because I think there's a lot to be had.
I agree with 10%. Anybody else? I've got you now, based on February, Mike, coming around 200, a loss of $265,000. Does that sound about right?
That's what's on this sheet here, yeah.
That's where I got it from. So if we take, if we improve that by 10%, we should be somewhere around a loss of $189,000 to $190,000.
I even have a hard time accepting that.
Well, it's gonna be a different number.
No. If we can continue to make a 10% improvement every year, we finally get to where we need to be. But I just think there's a lot to be had in the restaurant business, as far as profit, moving towards zero.
190, minus. And that's without the, understanding that's without the maintenance agreement, without the carts. It's just those first groups. So you should be somewhere about a profit of about, what is that, $280,000, $290,000 between the operations.
So, just wanna clarify, you said 10% on that to 65?
10% improvement over the 265, which should be about 189, something like that.
10% of that's about $26,000.
Oh, did I give you a bad number? Oh, you know what, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not even reading my own numbers. You're actually about 35% better than last year, correct? So what I did was I took the rest of the months that you're up against, and I took a 35% improvement there. You don't like that?
Well, you remember, we changed the whole format after the first quarter last year.
Yeah.
So, compared apples to apples, this was the first board that we ran this way.
Right.
You know, so it's moving that number there. I mean, obviously, moving even a number, we can certainly do. It's a how do you wanna get there, right? Because if we're going to improve, we know we're going to, we have double-digit inflation, true inflation, right?
Yeah.
We know that we're gonna go up 9% to 11% in hourly labor rates, because of the minimum wage. To do that, I mean, we're talking some increases to get there. Now, granted, we're gonna try our best to be the most efficient we can and move towards those numbers. I mean, we have shown steady improvement in growing, you know. Obviously, the restaurant is right about where we're budgeted right now, forecast-wise, and for the loss, the golf is doing better than what we expected. We're considering that, I know, I believe personally that the COVID effect is going to keep going. For golf, it's going to continue on the path it is. So, you know, obviously, I think there's some there, some room there. I know that we have a scheduled rate increase for the membership dues.
That's for golf.
Obviously, we're working with dynamic pricing to move rates in there. You know, we're a little handcuffed, because of condition wise right now. I think we all know, we've taken some step backs, we've had some service errors in the restaurant. I mean, we're certainly not perfect, we're doing everything we can to get better. Obviously, we had, you know, we had a staffing change that impacted, and the gentleman took some staffers with him. But, you know, we will work through it. I certainly think we can, you know, we wanna discuss bottom line, we can get there. I like, I can agree with the golf number. We're going 190 in the food, yes, I think there's some upside there. But especially if we're talking about adding additional, you know, another layer of management or something.
The idea behind this is for us to tell you what we would like for you to achieve, and for you to come back and say, you know what? I can't, and this is the reason why.
Okay.
As opposed to the old way of saying, I need a half a million dollars. And we go, okay.
No, I understand, so...
So if you want to, I use a different set of numbers. So if it's 265, which is your numbers, and you want a 10% increase, then it should be, let's make it 230 as the goal. That's about 10%.
Yeah.
How's that?
I still think that's just...
Yeah, that one's gonna have to improve every year.
There's no reason it shouldn't.
I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Herrick. I don't think we can get it down to zero, but I know we can get it down better than we got it.
Um...
Restaurants don't stay in business not making money.
Well, as far as this, the way the numbers protrude on this page, yeah, no, I agree with Mr. Brooks, but...
Restaurants don't stay in business not making money.
Freestanding restaurants do not, that is correct.
Correct.
We are not a freestanding restaurant, though. Possibly. Okay, so we're gonna say minus 230 and 480. That's your goal. Good luck, see what you can do with it. General fund. It's you and me, you go first.
I had revenue up 7.5% to cover the cost of inflation.
I had the revenue up 7%. What do you think, 7% on the revenue? 7% on the revenue.
It's up with all the growth and it's coming in.
Exactly.
All right, and we're gonna base it off of that 36648, so plus 7%.
Is that what it's all based on, is the growth? Is that where we're coming from?
Or the additional revenue.
Okay, okay.
What about the expenses?
39.20, about 39.20.
Yeah, what about the expenses? What percentage?
I put in zero. If he can, through, I'm hoping through better efficiencies that he's finding, that we can offset the increased labor charges through efficiency, so I said zero.
I think that, I think the expenses are gonna go up, just inflation.
I know they will, that's why I'm...
I don't know, I don't know if he can control it.
It's probably a decision in the hourly rates, because of the minimum wage laws. Everything we're buying now, it doesn't matter if it's paint or gasoline, it's over the place. It's all up 7%, so it would be a tough order to do that, but we're taking steps to have options to reduce our expenses.
Yeah, but inflation is 7 or so percent, but that's not gas. I mean, gas is 48% or some, I mean, it's all what we're buying, so...
What'd you have?
I had a 10% increase.
I'm sorry.
10%.
10%?
Yeah.
So you had 10, you had zero, I actually had 5. And Mike, what'd you think?
I don't, I don't, it's gotta be around 10, I mean, I would think.
I mean, we can drain it, but...
He's gonna be able to find to help reduce that.
Well, I'm...
But maybe I'm correct.
There are efficiencies, but I think...
Zero is a tough goal.
I think we're gonna be adding people and payroll, is what I'm working on.
Yes, we are, we have to.
To run this thing, to run this thing correctly.
Yep.
Especially if you're looking at how great code enforcement, that you have a security officer now, if you get certified to code, you get to say, well, I'm working out.
I'm not gonna get into the certified part, but I think with the newsletter that we're talking about, the code enforcement, the security, the meter readers, and...
It costs money.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to be realistic and assume that the expenses are going to go up. Hopefully, you can prevent them from going up too much, but I, they've gotta go up. I can't see how they don't. I mean, the cost of labor.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, to get people to come out and do things, especially in Sebring, it's very difficult these days. So I, that's, you know, that's a big nut right there.
Yeah. Tom said, you said 10?
I did.
Mike, you said 10?
Yeah. Well, I think that's a good guess, I mean, but it might be...
Well, it's a guess, these are all guesses, I don't disagree. Make them even, 7 and 7.
That's, that's...
7 up in the revenues, 7 up in expenses.
Okay.
See what he can come up with. I mean, this is just for him to see what he can come up with. This is on the general fund. Now, we can say the same thing on the utility fund. You wanna go 7 and 7, just across the board, we can do that.
Because I think revenue will need to go up higher.
Okay, that's fine, let's have that conversation, so...
10% because I, I think we need to have a rate increase on water.
Yeah. Okay.
I think in order to start creating the funds necessary for stormwater and wastewater treatment, I think we need to get our revenue...
All right, so general fund will go 7 and 7. Utility fund, revenues, you say what?
I said 10.
You said 10? 10, 10. Let's make it 10 on the revenues. Now, let me ask you this, the assessments don't come on the utility fund, that's on the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
And with the utility, we're, of course, working on that rate case we'll bring back in July, and where politically the board wants to go with the rate, it'll dictate the projects.
Right.
So I don't see a hard time with the utility making that happen, even with the great increases in costs we have. Labor-wise, we're doing pretty good, too. You know, we're, I would say we're struggling, because we got a couple of those positions for potential meter readers, trainees, that we've interviewed people. But as far as that dual-licensed operator positioning with all our advertising, we've struck out. I think I mentioned to a few of you that LaBelle was advertising for a dual operator at 30 to 35 an hour. We were at 20.
That's probably...
22, and that's a national engineering firm that contract maintenance that plant for LaBelle. So it's tough out there getting licensed people. Luckily, Joey's been pushing his folks to get licenses and giving them the hours on the plants, but...
Why, I think it's a challenge, because just from what I've learned since you've been here, running the district is going to be, and to do it right, is gonna be a lot more money than what we've been spending. I mean, it's clear that it's, the costs are gonna go up, but we gotta run the district the way it should be, so...
In some cases...
And that's the number-one thing, is the district, not anything else.
Sure, in some cases, the local governments have formed stormwater utilities, just like a water and wastewater utility. And what they do is they take those budgeted funds in theirs and move it over to the stormwater utility, and it's basically a separate fee you pay. You could pay it through your utility bill, and it kinda gets it out of the general fund, but lets people see what they're paying for, it's very transparent. You know, here's the projects in stormwater we're gonna fund, you're paying a water bill, a sewer bill, and a stormwater bill. And that, and you could say $3 a month, or something like that, what the offset would be, but that's another idea to...
I mean, Mike's right, if we're spending money to improve the district, it's gonna cost us money. It's as easy as that.
Yeah, it just simply has to be done, I mean, it...
All right, so 10% on the, on the... All right, so ten percent on the, on the revenue goal, what about the expenses?
I'd like to see it stay flat, but I realize that, I know there's an increase in labor costs, increase in supply costs.
Mike?
Uh.
Oh, Craig, put the, put in front of you, that's it, okay, thank you.
I said I, I, I put down flat originally, but I know there's labor cost increases and there's, uh, product cost increases also. So probably that is not realistic. I know labor costs, maybe, maybe more realistic is, is actually a seven percent increase in revenue also, or in the expenses. And even that's going to be hard to probably get, but.
Pick a number.
Hold it to five percent.
Beverly?
Seven.
Yeah, seven or, this is on the expense side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's seven or ten, I mean, because I think we're going to be shocked on what we should, I mean, there's so many things that aren't being done that should have been done. I, I just think the more you get involved, you're going to find them, more and more things. It's, it's just a whole different ballgame now than what it was before.
All right, I got, I got a ten. Seven, five.
I mean, I'll go with seven if that's what you want, but I think we're going to be, I think it's going to be more than that.
Well, that's a goal, let's, seven percent, let's go with that, see what you come back with. So we got golf, a profit of four hundred and eighty thousand, restaurant with a loss of two hundred and thirty thousand. The general fund, the revenues, uh, up seven percent, and the expenses, I can't read my own writing, go up seven percent as well. And the utility fund revenues go up ten, and the expenses go up seven. Those are goals, we'll see how everybody done, does. When you come to make your presentation, you need to explain why you're off by whatever the amount is, if, if necessary. Any other questions on that? Any questions from the public? Okay, that brings us to new business? None? Discussion to and from board, anybody have anything?
I, just from the last meeting, then Beverly asked about, are we going to have any money for some benches at the dog park?
Yes, we've, we've got enough money in our budget for this fiscal year to get that done. We, we plan for things of that nature to come up in our, um, repair and maintenance budget for recreation and community services, so that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
And the two.
I've had people ask me, and I, I know Bev asked at the last meeting, so it's just some people want to know that.
And there are two orange chairs last night at seven o'clock that were still there, and there was nobody down there.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, there was?
There were two orange chairs left in the one closest to Sun and Lake Boulevard that were there last night at seven o'clock.
Okay.
They leave them there, I think, they're there all the time.
Well, they need to be picked up and removed.
Sure, I mean, okay, well, at that point, we would probably just need to file it as a, like a report to security and have them picked up, and then they would have to, I guess, pick them up from you, Bob, is that correct? Sure, yes, okay.
I just don't think they need to be there. I mean, they're reserving space, is what they're doing for their, for their dogs.
Anything else in board to board? All right, let's take a two-minute, three-minute break, and then we'll go into capital.
Then we're going into capital?
I believe that's all that's here. Capital, five-year capital plan. Now, I did ask Chris that on the first pass, we just had like a summary sheet and not all of the attachments describing everything. I thought it might be easier not to get into that at this point. Once we go through this list and eliminate anything that we decide to eliminate, the next time you see this, there will be all the supporting documents for each of the items that we've decided to carry forth or have another conversation on. So with that, we'll take them one at a time. Feel free to ask any questions, some of this is understandable, some of it is, needs an explanation, I'm sure. Some of it, we will say it's good for now, we'll see what it looks like next, next budget recap on the, uh, on the capital plans, and some of it will say, no, it's not necessary, let's take it out now. So with that, Chris, you can start with the general fund.
Here we go. Well, the first, the first sheet that you see that we have there was, uh, general fund, and, uh, it was golf. Oh, I'm sorry. Now, we've got administration and recreation, security, roads and drainage from discussions, and, and these numbers all came, came from staff talking to them. And I said, if you don't ask for something, you're not going to get it, and if you ask for something, you're going to have to defend it. And they're, just from budgeting, we may have to cut some things, but throw it out there and let's see where it ends up in the, in the end, after the budget's off.
Take them one by one.
Okay. Well, the net, network project, that is a number of items that we had put together, and I asked Bill from our consultant, Mid-Florida IT to put together a list and a work plan of everything from the computer side that we need. And, uh, it was a pretty big bill, and we were going to break it up into phases, but I'd like to have Bill take a minute or two just to go over what we put together, how we put it together, and really where you see our primary needs.
Bill Daly from Mid-Florida IT. Hi. Um, I think this, I think we're in the same place a little bit. We're not doing things the way we used to do. We've, we've come in as a consultant in the past, I'm not handling any of my clients that way anymore, it's just too much of a liability. The, the biggest thing that I see as an issue here is our network. We've got a few upgrades that are, that I've got here that, they're a big, they're a big change. From my, from my department, I think for the grand, for the whole budget, it's not a huge change. There's a few other items that are listed here, like the VoIP phone system, the phones have been a huge, I think they're terrible. If we can change the phone system, that'll give us a lot more capabilities and actually save money in the long run. Um, and then the security cameras are another thing that I've got listed here that, um, currently, they're not being managed, that's not something that we do. We've got an outside firm that we use, that we would use and recommend. Right now, they're, most of them don't work, so I, in my opinion, I think we should totally replace that system.
And, and I'll add too, you know, it's, it's a huge bill, we haven't gone out for bid, we just asked for a quote. But you're looking at forty-five thousand dollars, and then you're looking at budgeting money to keep them in repair or service contract every year, so it's significant. Our safety and security is a big item, but if you aren't going to manage them, if we have somebody come in and an incident happened, oh, you have a security camera here, that's one of the ones that doesn't work.
These, where, where are these cameras located?
There's one right behind you.
Well, I mean, are we talking just this building or?
Every, the whole, the whole, the whole organization. Forty-five thousand would replace every camera here, so I, to me, sorry.
So we're talking the clubhouse?
Right.
The district office?
Uh, the club, is the clubhouse is a separate, yeah, and that, that, that was on a separate, for you guys, it should have been together, but that was a separate, uh, separate bill that, uh.
Is that listed here someplace else?
It's not.
Oh, it's not listed at all?
No, but I'll make sure you have that in the future.
Yeah, we, we have the full thing, but it's almost like if you're going to do it, good, do it right, but if you aren't, you're going to leave half your cameras not working, just get out of the camera business.
How many cameras do we have?
Uh, sixteen.
There's a lot more than that, I, I'd have to get you an actual number.
And I, and I have a full proposal that goes at building by building and what's there.
Correct.
What isn't, and what's in disrepair.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand was the number I got.
But that's without, that's apparently without the, uh, club.
The, when, when you talk about the clubhouse, the, part of that quote that we got.
The restaurant.
Does include the, uh, golf carts.
Right, the golf maintenance.
But it doesn't include the buildings at the golf course. I think that those are.
Does it include the inside of the clubhouse? The restaurant, is the restaurant included in this?
You guys are using the same vendors.
See, it should be, they should have their own budgeted item for that, I mean, there's so much hid.
So all of our, our entire camera system was just, we just redid it with the same company that they got their proposal from two years ago. So our cameras are, they're up to date, they all work, they're good. In regards to, I think on the one proposal, when I was looking at it, there was one for the cart barn, which is the only one that, there is not one in the backside of the cart barn where the cart return is.
So this is the same system?
It's the same company, the same company that did that proposal, am I correct, it's Carlos, did ours in the clubhouse.
But shouldn't they all be on the same system? I mean, they all should be tied together, right?
But they would be able to, I would assume, after this project, but he, he would need to tie the cart barn one in.
We've got to stop thinking golf and district, bro, this is Sun and Lake.
I, I agree with that, because that's exactly my agreement, what my agreement with Sun and Lake is set up in two separate companies. So that's how, that's how I operate a hundred percent, is two individual entities, so.
We pay the bill for it all.
You're right, we should change that.
We should change it.
Okay, I'll make it happen.
Should we not change that?
So the forty-five thousand that we're doing is the cart barn barn.
It's this build, so the forty-five thousand is the district office, this facility.
Right.
And that's it.
Uh, there's the tennis courts, there's unit twenty-three, there's four, unit four. And then, uh, there's one other location that we don't have yet that you've, you've mentioned a couple of times, we didn't get a quote for. That was four?
And also, also the maintenance building.
Oh, and the maintenance building, correct.
So I think we're fine, does anybody have any, we're good with that. Anybody have any?
We need to do it, or like Chris said, get out of the business.
And one thing we, we talked about too is very similar to having a successful website, you need to have somebody that takes ownership of the security cameras and is in charge of it. I would think that we migrate that to Bob and security.
Let's, let's get them.
Thinking about it, but somebody needs to take ownership to continue it to work.
And Chris, I think we need a breakdown in different departments. I mean, if, if the golf course has some, they should have it in their budget. If, if the utilities have it, they should have it in their budget, and we should have Sun and Lake's in their budget. I mean, at least we'll, we know what are its costs in each individual department. I mean, there's so much stuff hidden. I mean, we're going to get into this, and it's going to be one thing after another that's, that doesn't show up on a budget except Sun and Lake's budget.
And we, we will do a breakout with those items.
Good, good.
Somewhere to other things, like you said, and, and, uh, previously, they didn't have cameras at the wastewater plant and the water plant, but that's one thing DEP comes in and says, you don't have a camera on your facility because of Homeland Security, so we're remiss in not having.
So forty-five thousand will take care of all of our camera security needs, is that correct?
Correct.
Anybody disagree to that?
No.
What is this netwood project? That's thirty-three thousand. That, you said that's a whole bunch of different stuff?
Bill, we talked about doing the net, network upgrades, I think the first four or five things on your list and.
Yeah, let me pull up my numbers. So that is the cost of new firewalls that are up to current standards for every single location. We went through and did an audit about a month ago and identified a couple of pretty big vulnerabilities, in my opinion, that I'd rather not talk about on record. That need to be changed. And there's, there's also a, that goes along with that, the Senate just passed, and I can send it to you guys separately, I think it's H twenty, seventy fifty-five, that's requiring us to do cyber training, that's requiring us to make a lot of these upgrades.
Anybody disagree for the first pass? V O I P phone system.
So currently, we're using an, kind of, it's antiquated, we're using an antiquated phone system. It doesn't work a lot of the time. Anytime we make a change, uh, the phone person has to come on site. I'm, I think we've had a lot of complaints about it. A VoIP system would give us the ability to make changes all from one central place, and as a side, it costs less money also.
And how long a period of time does that take?
To implement?
Yeah.
I, usually, the longest part is porting the phone numbers over a couple of months.
My recommendation on that is do it now.
Do it immediately, yeah.
Don't make it a capital, it's ten thousand bucks.
And one of the reasons we looked at that too, when you talk about cost savings, and people like, we have to buy these new phones, well, you do, but you're no longer paying that monthly phone charge for that phone sitting on your desk. So after about a year and a half, you've paid for everything, and you're not getting that repetitive phone bill and backfill. And some of, some of those phones that are sitting on your desk, if you get up and go, you just hit the button and it ports the call of your cell phone.
We're going to take that out, and that could be done now. Advent Fitness Center contribution.
That's just something I put in there if the board wants to consider, you know, it's still talking to Advent, they want us to participate at some level in their fitness center funding. Uh, some of the people are, great idea. Some of the people are, great idea, full service up there, physical therapists, et cetera. Some people don't. You know, they think, and we looked at it as a business case of shutting our little fitness center in here and saving some money and.
Let me ask, who is interested in going to or supporting that, uh, their new facility that they're building?
I am.
Okay.
I want to close this though.
Yeah.
Yes.
My thought process is a cost neutral, disposable cost is about fifty thousand a year. Put fifty thousand in for Advent. Close that gap.
Yeah, I, Craig, I, I'm in favor of that, but we need to, and I talked to Randy about it, that we need to be able to, our ten people that are using this, they need to accommodate them before we close this. And he said they could, so.
They don't have a facility.
Well, they got something there that they, they have, they have it there already, Ray, but for what?
How many years away is their facility? How many years away is this wellness center?
I'd say two years till it opens. They're, they're finishing the money raising right now.
They haven't broke ground on it.
Nope.
Well, it's going to be more than two years.
They have a, they have a facility where you can, well, better than what we have here in this little thing that could take care of the, but we need not to throw away the ten people that are using this.
And, and I've talked to them about a bridge.
Yeah, and that's what I talked.
A place that they can go and the people who are on silver sneakers can continue to use that, so.
Cause I think at one time, four or five years ago, we, we were going to close it and then all of a sudden we bought a fifteen thousand, a piece of equipment which we couldn't do anything about because the general manager bought it and it's under twenty-five thousand. So it's, I mean, those are the things that you, we all have to work as a team if we're.
How much does this cost us a year to run it? Nothing. But how much does it cost this?
I'd have to go back and, and look through. We've done a couple of the breakdowns with that regards with the cost of cleaning, maintaining the equipment, the supplies that go in, the one that I, insurance. I don't have any numbers as far as, I don't know how we would break out like the, like power and things of that nature of that building.
Well, based on what these guys are recommending is we need a number and that's the number that we're saying we would want to give to the facility, the wellness center, right?
Number that was thrown out back in memory says this is the.
A year for that?
Well, it, I, I think that part of that, Ray, is the, the equipment that we buy over us. Because like I said, you buy one piece of equipment that it's, it's ten or fifteen thousand dollars, one piece of equipment.
You guys are recommending that we give them fifty thousand dollars a year?
If I can interject, one of the, one, it was, it was, it was twenty. And if I can interject there, one of the things that was discussed was the bridge program. Because we're all fully aware that they have not broke ground yet. My understanding is they have to raise at least, I think it was fifty percent of the funds before they have the ability to actually break ground. I'm happy to circle back with Kristen and see where they are in that and if they think they're still around that two-year timeline, kind of what their thought process is. I, I know that we've, obviously we all met with them on an individual basis and kind of talked through some of that discussion. I, I think we're at a point where obviously if, if this is something the board decides that we are going to do a contribution, we can start some more formal, like legitimate formal conversations and talk about what a bridge program might look like. But I think we need to be at a point where we are looking at, at truly doing the contribution before we continue those conversations with them.
It sounds, it sounds to me that we have three people here who want to go ahead with it.
Okay.
I can do the math. Three out of four, that's, that's, that means we're going ahead with it.
To me, to me, the important thing is the bridge. I mean, and he, he has promised me that he will get, that can work.
We stressed in those meetings that two of the most important things that we felt for our residents was going to be that discounted rate, that they were going to be able to come and join at a discounted rate and that we needed some sort of a bridge program so that the, the few people that do use that gym, we weren't leaving them high and dry. And that's something that they felt was attainable without a doubt. So if we are ready to go into some more formal conversations, I'm happy to reach out to Kristen and start arranging that.
Sounds like it's three, yeah, like we're ready to go into it. However, I do want to know what a realistic date is if they think they're going to have it done.
Yes, I, I will ask her for an update.
I gotta tell you, it's seven years away. I guarantee you.
I'll, I'll ask for an update.
They don't have the money.
I'll ask for an update on their fundraising. They had a substantial amount pledged before they even did their first event, their tournament here. They're, I think they're closer than we think to that halfway mark.
Last I heard was one point three million they had. That's the last.
That's not even close.
I know, but that's.
They wanted five, they got one point three, that's.
Well, that was.
That means they were, that, they were halfway there, yeah. They were over halfway there before the campaign launch, so I will talk to Kristen.
Empty at this point in time. If indeed you find out that they are seriously interested or have the capabilities of giving us a deal, check out the price of what ours runs a year and that'll be starting point for the dollar amount that we will give.
Got it.
Is that fair enough? We can, then we can debate that number if we don't like it.
Yep.
Yep.
They are significant customer guards.
Yes.
Utility wise, but money they spend at the restaurant and club.
Not to mention the money we give them. We give them five thousand dollars or so every year, don't we? If I'm not mistaken. All right, let's go on the next one. Seal Club Parking Lot, forty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's just two items had for preventative maintenance that if we can get out there and seal coat the lot, the paving will last a lot longer. So I just put in the club parking lot ceiling next year and the year after to do the maintenance lot in the back.
Any comments?
Leave it.
Move it. You, you all do know that this is twenty-four million dollars worth of stuff. To seal a parking lot? When there's nothing wrong with it, yeah. Hell, we can't even paint the damn, what do you call those things? The parking spots, those blocks? We can't even paint those in the same color. Are we going to do that, by the way? Do you really? What, what do you call those bumpers where the cars go in the parking lot? Your car pulls up to a. We can't even get them all the same color. We started painting them yellow, then we missed half of them. So we walked away and didn't finish it.
I'll look, I'll look into some paint and get the guys.
I know, but I've been, it's.
Hey, you real, you want them yellow?
You want, you want to seal the lot? Maybe we should paint the things that we haven't painted yet. You want to leave that? I say no.
Well, I.
I say move it.
In order to maintain, Black Dog, you have to seal it. I don't know what to do. If it's due or not due. If it's due, then I think we should do it.
We just did it a couple of years ago.
I'm, I'm only going to interject my opinion. You don't have to like it. I'm just, this is just a common opinion in our office. The seal coating looks pretty. That's its main function. Unfortunately, it really doesn't extend the life of the asphalt that much. It's, that's up to you whether or not you want to, it can if you have crack problems. Don't get me wrong, it can help. But ultimately your asphalt's your asphalt. If you're not, if your asphalt's not degrading to the point where it's falling apart, it's not going to add a lot of usable life because after two years it wears back off. I'm sure you've seen it in other places it's used. It, it might be better to just save the money for a few extra years and just overlay it like we do the roads. If you're, if you're worried about the integrity, if we have a problem with the asphalt, that's a different story, but that's my opinion and of our, of our office. But you can always, there's nothing wrong with painting it, um, seal coating it, but it's not going to provide a lot of structural integrity.
Okay.
Okay.
That's.
Based on that, there's, you guys want to keep it or move it?
Move it.
We've got a lot of cracks open.
The maintenance side.
The what?
There's tunnels and cracks and it definitely needs to be recharged and it needs to start again, like you said.
We're talking about your, your building?
Both, the, the, both buildings, maintenance facility and maintenance.
I'll just back, Ray, I'll be back.
We just built the maintenance thing four or five years ago, right?
The maintenance, you talking about the maintenance building?
I, I think we have to move them.
I, I would, I would save up a little bit, maybe add it into the paving budget and then just overlay it.
I move it out to twenty-five and twenty-six.
Definitely patch the potholes if we have them, but I would, I would just overlay it. Spend that much.
Is that still just seal coating or is that made?
Overlay it.
Overlay it.
Yeah.
Move it to, I, I, let's for the time being move it to twenty-five on the forty-five and twenty-six on the forty. There's other, I, it's just, I think there's other things that we have to do. Recreation, playground, playground renovation, three hundred and fifty thousand. I assume we're a go with that puppy?
It's, it's still at the state level right now. We have to wait. I actually spoke with Corbett last week asking for any updates that he had and it's, right now we're basically at the mercy of the state and finding out whether or not we're approved for the funds that we submitted the application for. I.
We submitted for what, fifty percent?
The, the, the FERDA, two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand we submitted for?
Which was fifty percent.
When did that get submitted, you know?
It was last year, the month. I cannot remember. For some reason, I'm thinking it was somewhere in the August neighborhood, August, September. Okay, so somewhere kind of late summer, early fall neighborhood. I can go back and find the date when it was due. My understanding is don't expect to hear anything before July. Is what I've been told.
And that would be right.
On whether or not we get the funding. If we get the funding, then we're all clear. The board has already approved that we are going to use rep services as a contractor for that. So as soon as we know how much money we're dealing with, because right now we're talking about half of the project, two hundred thousand dollars, that we're waiting to hear if we're going to get in a grant.
Right.
And if not, then we had the, the little version that we can do that the board.
Right, we budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars total for the project. If we get the grant funding, it would end up squashing out to two hundred thousand dollars of FERDA money, two hundred thousand dollars of Sun and Lake money. It has to be a fifty fifty split.
Or a hundred and seventy-five, hundred and seventy-five, right? It could be less, couldn't it?
I believe so.
I have to believe so. They'd be happy. I don't want to spend more than three fifty if that's what, if that's what it's going to cost us just to get a grant.
Sure, so.
The other thing that I have a concern over is this whole thing was sold to us, and correct me if I'm wrong, on, on the concept that it was dangerous for kids right now.
It is.
So can we really afford to wait if it's dangerous?
I wouldn't be opposed to taking it down now. It would just be a matter of understanding that there's nothing there in the interim. It's not in good shape. It hasn't been in good shape.
I mean, are we, are we putting ourselves in a position that may come back and bite us by having it there?
By having the current one there?
Yeah.
I mean.
Does the insurance people look at that?
They did, they did. And it is, it's an at-your-own-risk. Um, one of the things that I mentioned in my update was that it was suggested that we get gates to go on the fence that goes around those. And so we have ordered those gates and Booker's going to be installing those.
That was a dog park.
No, 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 no. That's the, um, the playground.
Are those gate, are those fences and gates going to be usable in the new? Well, then I, how much are we spending on?
The gates?
Gates.
It's almost a thousand dollars for the two gates, but to have it open in a place where it's.
You can't afford not to have them.
Have a gate.
If the equipment is dangerous and somebody might get hurt, maybe we ought to take it down now.
Oh, we, we took a few pieces of equipment out of there that were broken off and.
But what about the rest? If, if it's, if it's a safety hazard, I think it's got to go now. I mean, some of, you guys got to make that call. I don't know what it looks like. But if it's a problem, I wouldn't leave it up. Regardless of when we build the new one. I know we're going to build the new one. But if we have to wait because of the funding issue, I certainly don't want to put us in a situation that we're going to end up regretting.
Okay.
If we start this project, does that keep us from getting the funding?
If we, yes, I believe we can't do any, we cannot start anything with this project until we, we know.
Still up.
Correct. And I would honestly, that, that's a great point. I would need to check. I would probably check with Corbett or even the rep that I've talked to in Tallahassee to see if there would be any repercussions of us taking down the current existing structure right now before. My understanding was don't, basically don't touch anything. Leave it be because they take pictures of what's there, so.
Maybe we ought to just not allow people to honor.
I, I will.
Just close it down. Yeah, if you have to leave the structure up.
We, we can also go back over there and look at what's left after we, because like Chris said, there was some stuff that was taken out because some of it in there was just flat dangerous, so.
We have some insurance report. They came out and.
And Haley helped us get that to them?
Oh, yeah, sure. Can try.
At least, you know, to find out where we're at so that we can.
And the issue with that is, is, is that whole grant is a reimbursement type thing. You know, you're putting the money out so they, they don't want you like us building it now and then coming into their next fiscal year.
But maybe she can expedite it through this process for us. Can we try it?
Well, you guys let us know about the safety and what you want to do. Obviously, we're leaving it in there for the time being.
Yes.
I guess that recreation master plan, there's no dollar there, so we're just going to take that out, I assume. Bocce ball courts for sixty-five thousand. That was my great idea from five years ago. I don't really care. I think we have other priorities at this point.
I do too.
I would agree.
I would take the bocce ball, just take it out. As much as it hurts me to say so. The pool. I think, well, you guys, comments on the pool? I still think we got to do it. We, I, I think we got to do it. I mean, look at what we got. The place is getting bigger. It's, we have a kiddie pool. I mean, that's what we have, a children's pool. We have, or a young adult pool. I don't know what you call it. We don't have a pool for adults.
I agree.
Hopefully it doesn't cost that much.
I'm afraid it may cost more. I caught it. I bet it costs more.
I think for the time being, we have to leave. I would recommend to leave it. Anybody disagree? Promenade, a hundred and thirty thousand.
I take that out.
We can't do what we want to do, so why leave it in?
Okay, bye-bye. Parking expansion.
I think I would take the hundred and thirty and sixty-five that we just took out and put it on the pool, turn it up to two million. It's going to be that plus.
You think the pool's going to be two million?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Let's change it to two million. I, I know, first pass, it's fine. We're going to keep it is what we said. Parking expansion for the recreation center, nine hundred and fifty thousand.
I think if you do the pool, you're probably going to have to expand your parking.
I think once we put the pool in, if they tell us that they need more parking, we can address it at that point in time.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair.
Until, until then, I think it's, I would take it out. Anybody disagree?
Nope.
No, there, one thing we didn't include on this, but there has been some talk about it, was increasing the size of the dog park. You know, having another unit out.
Yeah, we did talk about that, but I, you think that would fall under capital to expand it?
You're putting new fence up and, you know, you're basically creating a new piece of it, so it's not maintenance.
And we would, I think, I think if we did expand that, whether it's expanding what's there existing or if we did one like in another location on the property, I think we would need to address parking in that instance. That's one of the biggest.
Parking is a problem.
Is a problem. So there's obviously a small golf cart lot, but other than that, folks are having to either park here at the community center or down at the sheds and walk. It's just known so that it's not, it's not necessarily a huge problem right now, in my opinion. However, if you make the, the dog park bigger, I think that we would need to keep.
The one side, I mean, it was just the, the big dog park, the big part of the dog area, not the small dogs, right?
Well, there is nineteen small dogs in it a couple of weeks ago in the small, you know, but in the, it, it just needs to be, the entrance of it needs to be moved to maybe the back. Because it does look, I mean, I, I've had a few complaints from, it does look bad when we have six, seven carts, golf carts out in the front with cars trying to stop. I mean, we need to move the, we need to move the entrance to the dog park, maybe to the back where the golf carts can get out of the, because it does look, it looks pretty shady. because it does look, it looks pretty shady with all those carts in front.
I, I would agree with that.
That would be nice.
We, we just need to get-
I like the idea of putting the entrance-
Entrance in the back and then we can put that down, Craig, but-
But I don't think that's capital, is it? Surely that's-
Was it capital?
The whole thing was fifteen thousand? To do the whole facility last time. It can't cost, it can't cost more than fifteen thousand if it were larger.
No, the only thing of capital is typically to look at it over five thousand dollars in new construction versus repair and replacement or maintenance work, so it's just nomenclature.
I mean, I would, I wouldn't mind, you know, talking with somebody in the district and going over and seeing what we can do and maybe getting a quote, but it just, it just needs to be enlarged a little and the entrance needs to be moved.
Let's add on dog park expansion, try and come up with a number based on what we're saying. I like the idea of the Coquina path. I like the idea of the entry from the rear. Those are both good ideas. See what will happen.
Are you, so are you saying like an actual parking area that is Coquina? Okay. Because we'll have to kind of look at too, where that entrance can be, like where would they enter from there, so-
And it's just for the golf carts.
Yeah, it's not for the cars.
So leaving, leaving the cars where they are down at the sheds, but making a, a larger expanded golf cart parking.
Right.
Golf carts over.
And they could, a lot of them park right here and walk.
It's, it's equidistant, honestly, between parking here and walking to the dog park and parking your car at the cart over at the sheds and walking. It's not that different.
Because I, I, a lot of times I'm parked over there where you did those three parking spots. I'm the only one and there's seven, eight, nine, ten carts parked right in front.
Right.
So we, we just need to move that.
Okay, we're going to add that on, come up with a number. Security. I'm not interested in talking about vehicles until we straighten out the other situation. Plus, I mean, do we have to spend so much money on a, on a security vehicle?
Well, if you look at the prices of vehicles these days.
Is that where this comes down to?
Yep.
Give them a golf cart.
Like another Gator.
Yeah, all right, but I, you know, again, we'll have the, we'll have the conversation on equipment.
And I will say recently, we, we went to, you know, when I got that Tacoma and we had that thirty thousand dollar budget, well, a base Toyota Tacoma four-cylinder, you know, they gave it to me MSRP of thirty thousand, but none of the other dealers are even doing that. And if I tried to find an F-150 or a Ford Ranger, I'm in that forty-two, forty-five.
Do, do remember what Bob said when he was here, and there's only one person at security at a given time. So to me, that means there's only a need for one vehicle, the way he explained it. And I know they have more than one vehicle. So we'll look at the equipment like we, oh, the, for the vehicles like we discussed later. All right, Rogan drainage, the equipment, six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, which is really five hundred, I mean, you, we don't need to have twenty-one, twenty-two in there, I don't think, for next time. Since that's already been put to bed, so. I went down the Rogan drainage equipment. It's six twenty-two, but you got to take out this year's eighty-five. Is what I meant.
Okay.
I'm not, uh, who's that, Drew? Who's, who's asking for this?
It's technically George.
Yeah, it's George's equipment list and at least equipment.
All right, is this vehicles or is this just equipment? What is this?
That's just equipment.
To do what?
It's all their cutting and mowing and side attachments and-
Oh, so this is part of their list? So the equipment list, we'll wait on that one.
We're going to look at, right?
We'll look at that one later.
Yeah.
Signs for equip, F-350 for signs and equipment, sixty-five thousand?
Well, that's, uh, those were two requests directly from George and the side mower attachment was something he thought they really needed. But he was looking for a big work truck like an F-350 that has a flat bed on the back that they can go around and react to things and put signs on it. Evidently, they used to have one like that and don't anymore, but-
Yeah, he said right now they don't have like a centralized location or a vehicle that they can store all their sign, extra posts, equipment, everything else on that they do used to repair signs or do any work to them. And that's what he was trying to look for, is get a vehicle that could have all that on it. I think right now they have to like throw it in the Gator, piecemeal what they need and take it out there on a trailer with a Gator. But he, he was just trying to get a piece of equipment that could handle, store all the stuff they need, nuts, bolts, extra signs, posts, all the equipment would be in one location.
What kind of equipment? What kind of equip- Huh?
Yeah, it's a whole truck.
So he wants equipment for five hundred and some odd thousand, then he wants an F-350 for another sixty-five thousand? I, I think that may be a bit much.
And it's a mothership, I would call it.
Yes, yes, it's, it's a-
It's what he's looking for.
Where's he going to park it? He's got it on the grass now. Do we have to cite him?
Yes.
No, that's, no.
Yeah, I think that's an example, example truck.
Seriously, where, where does he park this?
It would, it would have to be at the maintenance facility. I don't-
Just saying. Absolutely, thank you.
How often do you have to go out and replace signs? I think right now from the tractor trailer's turn and orders and stuff.
Well, yeah, I know that. All right, we'll just, unless you come up with a better explanation, that's out. Side mower attachment for twelve thousand?
It's technically not a, from what I understand, it's technically not a side mower attachment. It's for the skid steer that they already have. It's a mowing head, like a bush hog head, that they can actually maintain the ditches that we have, because right now you can't drive a regular tractor down most of our ditches. So they'd be able to actually drive their skid steer.
Okay. That's not a bad idea.
And it's, and yes, that's, I would definitely recommend keeping that if we can, because that's-
So the side mower attachment for the skids?
Yeah, it should be for a skid steer. Yeah, yeah.
They can use the skid steer to go down the ditches.
Correct.
We'll leave that one.
And they'll get mowed now.
Correct, correct. That's, that's, well, we'll get into that later.
Storm system rebuild, there's nothing there, so we'll just take that out, I guess. Oh, is this-
Yeah, the first one is-
Oh, okay, so this is the five million dollar deal, right?
Right, and I have, I have indicated there, SRF, where the funding would come from, and I just put the design and permitting in next year, contingent on us getting approved and then two years worth of construction.
So this is a five million, five million dollar loan we're asking for?
Correct.
And these loans are payable over what?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. So it's a twenty-year, five-year loan, which we pay, we start to pay back-
When the project's complete.
When the project's complete. So if we give them the project and we say it's going to take us two years to do it, we start paying two years after the completion date if we're on schedule?
After, after the project's complete, you start paying. It has to be done.
So we would not be paying, let's say, so that four point two million, if we started it on twenty-three, twenty-four, we wouldn't begin paying it till twenty-six or twenty-seven.
Correct, and you, and you basically, same thing, you're paying for it upfront and then taking draws and they reimburse you. So it's on your schedule, you know, you let them know, but-
Did I say that right? So am I right?
I think it's, well, if it's completed in twenty-four, twenty-five, I would say until year twenty-five, twenty-six, next that period.
All right, so have we applied for this five million? We have, we have asked for-
Drew's working on a facilities plan. We hope to bring that to you next month, have the public hearing, then it goes to DEP.
I thought Ariel submitted something to somebody on the drainage plan.
She did a request for inclusion, which is to get the list, to get the project on their list to consider. But they have, they have that facilities plan and it's a forty-five day review period, and then we're planning on that going to their August funding meeting. They do it twice a year and then get it approved in October.
So we still have a report that's going to come back to us and says if indeed we need to spend this five million dollars, correct?
You're going to spend it on.
That's, that's the first thing. We're going to get back a report that says, yes, you're right. This is what needs to be done and this is how much approximately it should cost.
Correct.
And that's coming next month.
Yes, sir, second meeting, where is when we're planning on doing it.
So that's coming next month. So if we put it into next year's budget, how much do we have to put, what is this, seven hundred and fifty thousand for design and permitting?
Engineering, design and permitting, all the work you're going to do out there. You're going to have to redesign it, re-permit it.
In preparation to do the actual work.
Correct.
So is that part of the loan?
Yes.
So that's part of the loan as well. So theoretically, next year, we pay zero.
Correct.
And the year after, if it's a two-year project, we pay zero.
Correct.
And then the two years after that, we pay zero, and then we start to pay it back.
And the project's finished and, yeah, that's, that's what-
Am I doing it right?
Yeah.
So-
So this is not-
But if you, if you're expanding that money and then requesting that money back, depending on that time period too, you have to have that money, like let's say at the end of that two years or your projects are done. Okay, we paid this, we want it back, but you have to have the money there to pay them, to get your money reimbursed. And the reason I said that, I worked in several of these loans and the entity had to go out and get a loan to pay for everything upfront, because then when they got the loan reimbursement, they paid the loan off.
Let that buy me one more.
Yeah. So you have to have it before you-
The SRF funding is on a reimbursement basis, so if they approve us for five million dollars, it's like on a draw, but we have to pay it upfront and then we send them in a pay request for them to send us.
Okay, and then we start paying them.
Yeah. Start paying.
So we're, they're going to, they're going to give us-
Contractors that does the loan.
But they're going to give us the loan money before the project is over, or before we can even start the project.
You start calling it. Soon as they approve it, you can start sending them invoices.
So we're still looking at them, correct me if I'm wrong, a five million dollar loan that we would need to start paying off twenty-six, twenty-seven? Or twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if I, do we know or have any idea, and I know it's a guess at best, if we borrowed five, five million dollars from whomever for twenty years, what, we would have to pay back yearly?
I'll have an amortization schedule on that. We put one together and we'll have it at the public-
Because that's what we need to know.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's the key number, is, is what we have to pay every year for the next twenty years.
Correct. And right now, the SRF loan fund is still down in that like one percent interest rate. It hasn't jumped up yet. I assume it's going to be with the raising of the interest rates, but with their federal money and what they're using it for, they're, they're always below market.
So we should be able then to come up with a number for the next capital meeting that we put in the twenty-six, twenty-seven for this project and take away the seven fifty and the, the other three numbers.
So we have to spend that money in order to get it back.
Right.
So wouldn't we still want it in there?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, you'd probably want a percentage. So every time your pay request came in, say it was like two hundred and fifty thousand every month or something, assuming they're going to cut us a check back within another month, you'd be out the two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand for that pay period, and then you'd be sending in your reimbursement. So you-
Well, if we have, if we have our six million dollars reserved,
Exactly.
Right.
Then we have it.
Yeah, I agree. No, I agree.
You just have to show that you're-
But don't we still want it there?
Yes, we have to have it there. I, I don't think we move it.
It's not an expense.
Is it, do we know if it's going to be reimbursed within like ninety days or sixty days from the payout?
Typically, when you send that reimbursement in, it's thirty days they're cutting you your check.
Okay, so we'd at least need to have the money sitting there, whatever the expected monthly fees are, depending on who's going to be doing the work, how fast they get done. We might have to cut a check for five hundred thousand dollars and then wait thirty days or sixty days to get the check back from the loan.
We have your six million dollar-
Right, well, that's where you'd have to have something allocated, so you know you're going to take some of that out temporarily.
But it's, it's in essence caused, what you're saying is caused because you pay it out and you get it right back, so.
So how do you, you can't really show it?
So you can't show it here. You would, you're showing when we start paying it out, paying it back is when we have it in the cash.
That's when it goes in, it doesn't come back.
Yeah, because, yeah.
And you could show, show that on the revenue side too, as SRF loan and, you know, mimic these figures.
I mean, I think for the sake of, of this exercise on how much we're going to actually spend, I think you show it in twenty-six, twenty-seven, whatever that payment plan for twenty years would be.
I agree.
Yeah, and I'll get an amortization schedule and attach it.
Oh, you're going to have to do it for the water plant too, which we haven't gotten to.
Yep.
And then take those three out and just call it drainage program or whatever you want to do. We okay with that?
Yeah.
Doing it that way?
Well, it doesn't make any difference. I mean, whether we leave it in or not, I don't care.
It makes a big difference because we're going to put in what our payments are going to be for twenty years.
I know, but it's still, still.
But any money we spend, Mike, within the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, we need to build more, so it's going to be-
Well, I just meant we, I just meant we change it next, you know, after it's done, but we can do it now. I mean, that's fine. I mean, I know in my mind what we're going to do, so. Yeah. That's fine.
We're okay? Try it this way?
Yeah. Before, before we switch topics, I didn't, I might have missed it, but do we still have our yearly paving and drainage projects that are supposed to be in this list or are they located somewhere else?
We were going to put that in the regular budget.
Okay.
The three hundred thousand, I assume you'll resubmit that, the road money as always and the drainage money as always.
Okay, I was just making sure it wasn't, I didn't miss it on you.
Yeah, this is something, this is that project that you did over in the budget.
Okay.
Which supposedly catches us up for the last twenty years. Right?
Well, that's what it is.
Yep.
Okay, page two, water and sewer operations.
Yeah, that's only thirteen million.
Yeah, lucky us.
You'll, you'll also see a number of these things on the wastewater treatment plant and those big dollar items, you know, ten million of it. Again, it's designated SRF.
So on that treatment plan, we're going to treat that the same way as we are the drainage, so that ten million dollars is going to be redirected, and what we're actually going to end up with when we receive this next is the kind of payment that we're biting off starting in two thousand and twenty-six for the next twenty years. And that becomes very important because of capitals down the road, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, sir, and, and on those capital costs in that loan repayment, that'll be in the formula for the rate case, because that's where that P and I will come from. So again, the utility, it's a little different because the general fund wouldn't be paying it, it'd be the rate payers paying it back and from those connection fee increases that we did.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to change that as they are. So the first one then is the infiltration line repairs for a million and a half.
Yeah, that's, that's just a yearly thing that we're going to try to go through and fix manholes and the older lines in the system that are forty years old.
But that should be part of the regular budget, because we don't even know what it is.
Right.
So we're not, I, I mean, we're, we're assuming that's things that are going to happen, and I would incorporate that into the regular budget. I don't see that as a capital because we have no specifics. Is that correct?
Yes, you can do it that way because it is R and R. It's repair and maintenance work more than a straight capital.
I would take that out. Meter system replacement.
And I, I put that in there because we did get a proposal from Cam Struck and we also worked with the other vendor, but they said if we wanted to, that they would work with us on getting the financing, doing it over ten years, and you could start on the meter project in October at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar a year payment, which again would be pushed into that rate case, pushing the rates up some to pay that P and I. And I just brought that forward and the, the vendor said, well, if you go ahead and approve it, we can lock the prices in for you now because those are also going up, but we will give the board an out that if you decide not to move forward with it in August, that you can just cancel the whole thing, cancel the equipment, move forward as we are, as just buying meters as needed with new construction.
Comments? Thoughts?
We just, I think we need to leave it in there. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll bring financing specifics and again, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into our rate cases. You know, yearly water bills, you're really looking at dime a month for each customer.
All right, so Beverly, you okay?
I am.
We'll leave that for the next pass.
Okay.
Automatic flushers?
Yeah, we did the twenty thousand, it was in the budget, well, this year, and then we were asking for another forty-two thousand to, to put additional ones in the system, and it's really just water quality, keeping the water fresh and putting in our dead ends and on the inner, outer areas of the- And it's really just water quality, keeping the water fresh and putting it in our dead ends and on the inner, outer areas of the system.
But is this something that we're, that you, that you know what you're gonna buy, or is this something you're anticipating we're gonna have to buy? I mean, it's a difference how I treat capital. Capital is when you know you've got a problem, you're gonna fix it, and you need extra money. This, to me, if we don't have specifics, sounds like it'd just be part of the budget, not capital.
Well, it's new equipment, that's why we have it under capital, that it's not replacing it existing.
So it's equipment we have to buy?
Right.
And you know, and you know what it is, or you?
Yeah, matter of fact, we just ordered four of those units, and we'll be installing those in the next 30 days, you know.
Oh, is that the four units you were talking about? So you, so you need more of them?
And really, to explain it to you, it's like Tanglewood does pretty good when it's full, and everybody leaves for the summer. The water doesn't go through there real quick, and it's not real fresh. So we put a flusher on the other side of Tanglewood, help move that water. Same thing up by Pebble Beach. The outer bands where there's utility lines, and no one's drawing off those, that water tends to get stagnant and it backs up. So it, it's really a water quality, and we wanna put one on the backside of the hospital.
Is this something that we need every year? Or is this a one-time, we're good?
Yeah, once we have that number in, we should have the whole system set, and have all our dead ends done.
Okay. You guys wanna do, leave it now?
Leave it.
All right, replace low-pressure sewer lines.
Yeah.
Unit five Barbarosa Cantoria.
Yeah, I, that was for the first year, and this was the same thing we did over on Barbarosa with the recent ditch cleaning. We said we wanted to go in at the same time and replace that force main and all those check valves and the service lines coming from the house. Because they were old, and that line was leaking real bad, and it was also undersized. We went from two inch to three inch. So, and I'm gonna let Joey expand on this a little bit, but we're just gonna, as we go into ditch cleaning and do that, do those other old units that have that same setup in them, like the unit five on Barbarosa.
Um, yeah. On our end, uh, sorry, Joseph Sleep, the supervisor of utilities, on our end, that system is becoming a headache. And the pipe that is in there is actually a two and a half inch pipe. It's almost nearly impossible to find a fitting. You have to order almost everything. So we're trying to, one, upgrade to a larger size, less pressure, back pressure on all the homes, especially during rainy season. The last three streets, they back up every rainy season. And we pretty much are at a point where we tell the customer, let the rain stop, give it a few hours. If it's still going off, call us back. Because from Almeria up, it's all gonna start backing up, and it's.
I assume it's more than just unit five and Barbarosa Cantoria? Or is that all it is?
It, there, there's room to upgrade throughout. I would say probably the next area that's gonna be questionable is, um, off Menorca, uh, by Columbus, that, uh, Savon, uh, I don't know the name of the area, sorry, uh, off the top of my head. But that area has a tendency to back up as well. Like Sioux Drive, like, about once a year, they're gonna call and complain about backing up, and we have to go bleed every line. Yeah.
I think we need.
I guess it's kinda like, is it, is it really just a repair? Or is it?
That's, that would be a total replacement.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I don't believe it belongs in capital. I would put it in the regular budget. It's like the roads and, it's like the roads and the, and the drainage. I mean, we, we did 300,000 for roads every year. If we've gotta do 75,000 every year for low-pressure sewer lines, that's, that's how I would view it, as opposed to a capital. You okay with that? Anybody disagree?
No.
And on those small, on those smaller pump systems, you know, where they have the emergency lights, the analogy that was given to me is, when it rains real hard, when you look down the street, it looks like Christmas, cause all those lights are off, and people get really concerned, but it just happens every time it rains, cause there's so many holes in those lines.
Let's move it to the budget.
Okay, but, but still, you're, when you move it to the budget, you're gonna, I mean, we're all sitting here knowing that there's, we're gonna have a, a whole bunch of expense coming up with all this stuff. I mean, and you know, it's, it's gonna get big because of stuff we haven't done in the past. So I, I don't mind having it in there to do it ahead of time before it breaks. But I, I don't care, because we're gonna have to come up with the money sometime anyway. But these are just stuff that, one of these days, we're gonna be hit with some monumental bills, you know. We're gonna be hit with some big bills sometimes on emergencies. So like.
If we don't do this stuff, it's gonna be worse.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant. That's, I, I wouldn't mind keeping it in there to just do it.
I wanna keep it in there, just, I don't wanna call it capital.
Okay.
Okay, manhole replacement, $220,000. I assume that's a specific manhole, right?
Uh, yes and no. I mean, it's yearly, we, last year, the year before last, sorry, excuse me, whatever it was, we ended up replacing two manholes on the fly, and it cost us a whole bunch of extra money, it seemed like, cause it was an emergency.
That's regular budget, man. I mean, this stuff, I mean, if you've got a specific, specific problem that we have to address, that's fine.
I have, I, we do have a few that are starting to ca, well, not cavitate around, but settling around and.
But you gotta put the regular, I mean, I want this done, but I want it in the regular budget where it belongs. This doesn't belong in capital. Anybody disagree? You guys can disagree.
If it's a, if it's a repair, it belongs in the expense.
Or the, these are planned for full replacement. This won't be a repair, if you will.
Influent meters, unit four and 23.
To my knowledge, we're the last place in the county that doesn't have a influent meters and/or auto samplers. And I'm anticipating from the last inspection that will be coming up, and I'm assuming the next inspection's gonna be January or February for both of those plants. So I'm being, trying to be proactive on that, because.
What is an influent meter?
It's all the flow coming into the plant. It's, it's one meter versus, for instance, unit 23, there's, it's technically two plants together. There's two outgoing meters for effluent. It basically will allow you to know what's actually coming in the plant every day, what's being treated, and then you'll see what's going out as well. Cause we have multiple tanks, different processes, it stops flow, so on and so forth, so.
Questions?
You're saying you won't do that until 23 or 24?
That's when it's in the budget, isn't it?
That's what he's got right now. So it won't be next year's?
Next year is 23.
You got it in 23, 24. Is that where you wanted it?
Uh, I was predicting this next year, but, yeah, 22, 23.
Let's, let's move it, move it for the time being.
And part, part of the reason for those influent meters, they wanna know too, is cause they wanna look at the amount of water that your plant produced versus the amount of water that's going into your treatment plant. And then they can see how much infiltration that you have. And we get concerned with it, because that's water bleeding into the system that we're paying to treat, that we're not getting any revenue for. Cause it's, you know, we can't build a customer, cause we're built based on their water use.
Okay. Elementary, elementary lift station new? A new lift station?
Yeah, that was a total rebuild on the elementary school station. I got that right?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Last time we did a total rebuild, if I remember right, it was $250,000.
Um, it's a lot smaller station, lot less flow, so granted, it hopefully would not cost that. I, I wanted to reuse the pit and rebuild everything around it. Um, we did just get it sealed. I think it should be sealed from the outside during the project as well. Valves, pumps, boxes, every panels are all outdated. It's a least favorite station I have to pull a pump out of, cause you have to pull a 15-foot invert out with it. And you have to literally take it and run it through the cables of the boom truck to hold it up from hits on the edge. Cause if not, the moment you unbolt it, it's free. So.
Forty enough.
It was, it was enough to redo the valve box on the top. Well, 40,000 of that was just for the valves up on top. So I would assume we could get it to work, uh, but with inflation, I probably, that was a price about this year. So if we put, I had a, I had some pretty strong quotes for all of this on that project.
I was just gonna ask, was the wet well included in that, or are we reusing the wet well?
Reusing the wet well.
Okay, it, it's probably enough to cover. If you're going two years from now, you're, unfortunately, it's a crapshoot on what it's gonna do, so.
Is this a problem that needs to be addressed sooner?
Uh, the ceiling, uh, has helped, it's taken care of it. Uh, the main concern right now is the pumps and the, the actual invert to the check valve system up top. It's the pumps, we don't have any backups. Um, the actual pipe is tied into the top of the pump. So we've, we have even priced rail systems to put in our new style pump. Just, one, it's safer for the guys, it's more convenient, you don't have to pull out everything.
System goes down, are we screwed?
Not necessarily. I wouldn't say that the backup is gonna be the, the end-all. I mean, we can hook a trash pump into it and get it through and get by, but it's not.
I guess my point is, should we move it up a year, is where I'm going. This is the first pet, we're gonna go over this all again.
Yeah. I would like to see that.
If you think the system is gonna go, we should probably address it before it goes.
And I, I will mention that the, uh, the projects that I turned into the county, that got rated so high, a lot of them are, are very similar, because I asked them for generators and pump station upgrades for the three schools and the nursing homes. So.
Is that covered in here?
Yeah, in fact, if that grant money comes through, then all this will disappear, because most of it will be funded through that.
Well, you know what, to that point, you should ask the, any of this, that is money that you've asked from the county that they're considering. That would be nice to see too.
And I'm also, I'm also asking the FEMA people in June, because that's when their mitigation grants come in. And I ran this by them at the meeting this week, is, uh, one was putting, um, pumps in, again, at the nursing homes and the schools. And also, uh, I did a stormwater, water, water quality project on the guise of us improving water quality going into the preserves. But it's related for funding to help rebuild our infrastructure.
I don't know, we, we've been asking for a lot of money and a lot of grants and all that, and so far, I've seen, uh,
Zero dollars.
So hopefully, it's gonna change in the near future. All right, let's go forward. Equipment, utility trucks, Tacoma.
Yeah, that was bought, that's done 21, 22, and we're looking at possibly another, uh, F-250 and another Tacoma, and maybe 25, 26.
We'll discuss, we'll discuss that.
Yeah.
When we do the truck situation. 800-gallon back truck, I've seen that before, haven't I?
It was this year.
That's in the existing budget, and we're working on that right now.
Okay. Uh, utility back truck on trailer?
That's a Thompson bypass pump for emergency situations to pull up and do those pump outs. And how many we have now, Joey?
We currently have two four-inch pumps on trailers, but we're looking for a six-inch pump, mainly for the master lift station. It's, it takes a six-inch pump there. We have it onsite, God forbid that goes down. But this also can be used for well pointing, save us some money there. Um, it can be hooked up to any station. So it's, it's, it's a very versatile tool. We use ours. We get nervous when one is out, because there might, that second one might go out to follow.
Leave it for now?
And that's also in that grant list that I submitted.
So that'll be asterisk next time.
Right.
General replacement plan. You're asking for one more this year. Is that, are you, are we following that plan that we had from a year or so ago? We're following that plan?
Two years.
That was outlined there, so we're good? I can't argue with that. Anybody wanna argue with that?
No.
Trail-mounted work light? What is that?
Uh, it's a diesel motor, and it has a, I think the one I quoted was 25 feet, a light, two lights, halogen lights at the top. Uh, right now, if we need power in the field in the middle of the night, we grab, we have two little shop lights and a generator. We throw it on the ground. Sounds good, it sounds like it works, but when I'm the one in the hole, under the ground, and somebody trips on that cable and that light comes down, who are we to blame at that point?
Can we do a flashlight or something? All right. We'll leave that one for now, I think, too. Thank you, you did a good job. Uh, golf fun. Listen.
Mike, come on up. And this is something we sat down and worked together on.
Well, the equipment replacements, we've already had a conversation on, so. Until we get more clarification on what's what and where's what. Well, it doesn't affect this, it affects, yeah, it does affect next year's budget. It affects your ordering.
Yes, sir. And a lot of, so, we went through with Amanda and Chris, and there's only really six items on the whole package that you have on $172,000 right now. That is basically a dollar buyout. The rest of it is all operating lease, and that's a flip lease. And there's nothing we're asking for any different besides an air fryer, another air fryer.
But the price is going up 65,000.
It's gone up considerably in the last five years.
When, when prices go up that high, just because of the nature of the beast, we do have to tighten our belts. We just don't say, okay, great, we'll give you another 65,000. And that's what I'm gonna be looking to do, or I think the board will be looking to do, is, is to put a little bit more pressure on you, on how much equipment you have, so we don't have to go to 300,000. I mean, to be honest with you, just cause somebody says I'm gonna raise you, it doesn't mean we go, okay, may I have another?
Right, I, I agree. So item for item that you have right now, on that, what I'm, that you have leased right now, is the only thing I'm doing, is what's the operating lease currently, and just rolling it over. So your only other option would be to either buy that out or to replace it.
I can tell you, I got, I mean, this is just me, I got a difficult time with 300,000, just on the surface.
Well, I, I would like to sit down with you and go through it, item for item, and look at what you have currently, and then say, what is it you don't, cause all it is, is your greens mowers. I already took a fairway unit out. You guys had three fairway units. I took a fairway unit out to try to save money already. Just going with two fairway units.
They, they're taking you up, how much, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50%?
And I'm looking at this thing here, and this is the, the column that we're, we made 400 and some thousand? That you just.
But you've been paying the lease every year.
Well, I, I know, but I'm, I'm looking at all these costs. It's 2.6 million dollars, and we made 400,000?
No.
I mean, that's what we're, we just told a whole bunch of people, we made 400,000 dollars.
It's before all your operating costs.
Well, okay. I, I own my own business, and if I had these kinda costs, I wouldn't be making money. I'm just trying to prove the point that.
The 400,000 was without capital.
I understand, I, I understand. I've been here, this is my seventh year. I understand, I've been complaining about it for seven years. I mean, it's.
Okay. We're gonna, we need to have a, a further discussion on the equipment, cause just cause they raise you 50%.
Well, yeah, and we, and we can't keep, and I understand, you, you need the equipment to work. I mean, that's.
That's all I'm, I'm, I'm not asking.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you don't, but.
I'm asking you to tighten your belt and use less equipment. That's what I'm asking you to do.
We can't do that.
You can't.
You can't, you, you cannot.
Say you can't without looking at it.
I've, Ray, I've looked at it. You got four greens mowers. If you wanna open at seven o'clock every morning, it's not, you're gonna take two greens mowers, and you're gonna mow 18 holes, and you will not be able to reverse shotgun. Or shotgun at all.
Tired of your excuses. Don't, let this not the place to have the conversation now. I would vote no for 300,000, I'll tell you right now. If I get overvoted, or outvoted, or whatever you call it, that's fine. But just to accept, to 36 to 300, I have a very difficult time doing that. That's all. But I'd be happy to sit down with you.
I would love to.
Yes, sir.
Golf course improvements, monuments and fixtures. 17, 5. What is it?
So on that, so when we have, um, guests that play Turtle Run, there's not a whole lot of really good signage all the way down Columbus to direct traffic down there. So in this budget, there is, um, we're gonna put some new monuments down there to help direct traffic to Turtle Run. Plus, uh, any other fixtures or monuments that we have on the course that need to be replaced. But mainly, it's the Turtle Run. From the clubhouse to, right, and then, and down Columbus.
What are you gonna, what are you?
It's the granite monuments.
Where you gonna put them? Where you gonna put them?
Well, I mean, they would have to be in the certain points, but one would have to be in the corner, going around the district building. The other one have to be at the crossing, and then the other one to be when you get to the corner, down there by one and 10.
I mean, you could definitely go less than.
How long have we had at the current way?
Say that again, credit here.
How long have we had at the current way?
As long as I've been here.
What, no. Comments, any other comments on this?
I, I always had my Rangers league, my shotguns, I'm sorry. I, I would not have.
If you have a profit, you gotta.
Right.
I think it's aesthetically, I think it's very nice, but I don't think we're here there this year.
Michael.
Excuse me?
No, I was gonna say, and that's fine, I mean, that, that's the whole process here, if you, if the board doesn't feel it is necessary, it's not necessary, that's fine.
And Craig, on yours, it doesn't have to be granite, I mean, it could be a signage, but I think aesthetically, like Bev said, in the future.
Yeah, granite is really nice, but the fact is, we've been operating this enough for quite some time, and maybe paint on the, on the surface to show that turtle will look better.
I agree.
There's enough.
Let's take that out.
We take it out. Cart path repair.
Do you have enough?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's, I mean, again, that to me is not capital. That to me is, is an expense of running the golf court, the golf course.
I mean, if, if.
I mean, that's just how I, maybe I'm not looking at capital the right way, I mean, to me.
I look at capital as anything over.
I know.
Give us a dollar for it.
Which is a good point, but I, I think we need, and Brian had to step out for a conference call, but I believe in the, in the contract, it states that anything over 5,000 in our contract has to go through capital, which will be different than your regular process amongst just the district itself. But I, I can't say I disagree with you that I feel that could be operating, but I think it's just the dollar amount that restricts our contract. I could be wrong, but if Brian was here, he would clarify that.
Anytime, it was, it was 5,000, or 10, I wouldn't even go 10,000, it needs to be capital.
I mean, I would put it, I, I mean, we can do it either way. I think it goes in the regular expense, don't you guys think it goes in the regular expense?
Well, obviously, we have to change something in the contract, if we're dictating anything over 5,000 as capital, then.
Again, I would, I would let Brian clarify that, but that's my understanding on it, and we could come back to that. I, I'm, I don't have an issue with it being either one.
Ask Brian when he comes back or get a clarification on it.
Okay.
I mean, we, it needs to be done, to Beverly's point, the cart paths is an ongoing situation.
I agree.
And I would say one other recommendation is, is the, you know, you guys all agree that they're narrow, correct? So some of these areas, I think we need to look at doing a six or eight foot versus a four foot. I mean, you're spending a lot of money and labor doing coquina and fixing all the corners every time.
Rip wrap. Rip wrap? 125,000, is this what I think it is? The rocks?
The rocks.
I mean, I think it's important, I'm sure the other guys don't.
I do too.
Huh?
You think, you do think it's important?
Yeah.
I do too.
I'm tired of seeing it constantly repaired and repaired.
Oh, you think it's repaired?
So if the rip wrap is going to do it, then I'm fine with it.
It will. I mean, if you look where we got washed out the other day, Craig, from the storm, I mean, it was basically outside of the rip wrap.
Yeah.
And again, I mean.
I did like the looks of 16. That looks really good. And, but I'm tired of seeing it constantly going over and replacing it.
We have to go back out before the rains right now and pull it back up right now. We have to fix that.
All right, so we wanna leave that in for the time being?
Yes.
Deer Run ice machines and cabinets.
Is that, is that a, a good unit? I mean, is that a commercial? I mean, I'm so tired of listening to slaves complain, I can just scream.
The turtle ones have been working just fine.
Fabulous.
Right.
The cabinets haven't had any problems at all.
Your cabinets helping, though, and the way that they're facing, they're not getting the weather like number five's getting right now. Five is exposed.
Move it. Fix it a different way, get a better unit.
Well, that's why we like to get the cabinets and get them up and get them protected where they're not getting exposure to the elements.
I think that's.
We wanna leave that in for the time being?
Yes. What are you gonna do with the bag drop of 15?
That's, so that's more the bag drop area, as far as, you know, first impression, this was on the, this was originally scheduled on the list for this year, you know, that was, sign, yeah, signs, coquina, we actually do need a new bag drop, they're old and worn out, the backstands themselves, the, there, there's the little waste bucket stuff there, they need all be replaced, but just, just to improve our first impression.
I think, in my opinion, there's other priorities. There are other priorities.
I agree.
I mean, it'd be nice to have, but, you know, there's other things on this list that I think are more important.
Okay.
Anybody disagree?
Nope.
Turtle Run green loops.
How important is that? Well, this morning, Craig, I tried to go out, and what I'm trying to do right now is take the existing heads and put a bigger tail on them, meaning that when the head's on the green, I'm trying to get the tail to go out further, so we get a little bit more water on the slopes. So trying to keep the slopes wet right now is causing excess water on the greens. So that's the only difference that, why you want the inboards and outboards, is right now our slopes are really hotter on turtle because of that reason. I can't put all that extra water on those greens.
Do you have black mold like you do?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I just think, I think this item is the one item that you cannot take out. If you want a good golf.
Right, I, I think the best example, he might know of more, but one of the best examples is, is 18 green turtle between the green and the cart path. Super, super dry right there, the grass is, you can see the grass is hot, but in order to water the grass there around the, the green slope, you have to water the green too, and the green's already wet, so you're trying to balance where the water goes, and obviously you're gonna take care of your green first.
Well, 550,000, six years.
Well, Tony and I had this conversation last time you asked, so Tony is the one who did your engineering for Deer, and I told Andrew the other day, because I asked him last month, you know, where's Deer Run, because I wanna try to get, at least get the price on, or where's Turtle's pricing at, so we actually have a number this year what it actually cost, and so we're in the process of trying to get a different engineer right now to do Turtle. Because Tony's just, he, he's got so many jobs going, and he, and he won't do it. The only other option is, is we could do it in-house. And that's, that's definitely an option.
Will 55, will this number work?
It'd be a lot, I would do it, I would do it out of PVC and do it for a lot less money.
Why would you wanna do that?
Why, why doesn't the current, why didn't have PVC if that would work?
Well, PVC is important.
The HDPE is, I mean, the heads, you figure you have four heads per green. So the pro process you're going through right now, you're paying for the engineering, you're paying for the wiring, the satellites, everything else, it's not that they can't be done in-house, I promise you that.
How much would it cost if we did it in-house?
I, I mean, I'll, I'll, let's get, I can get the pricing from Andrew.
But, okay. With everything that's on your platter right now, you'd have time to go ahead and do that too?
Not right now, Craig, no, sir. This winter, I absolutely could. I mean, but we're busy at that time.
In fiscal year 22, 23, you feel you could do that?
I could do nine holes a year, I promise you that. I could start the process and save you money.
Well, I'd like to see that.
Could you do it, no offense now, don't take offense, could you do it as well as this bid here?
The, this bid here is with HDPE, keep in mind, the HDPE, there's no joints anymore, it's a sealed system, just like what you guys did the last time. The, the problem that Mondragon did for you guys last time, and I don't know whether you, I'm sure you guys have walked around the greens enough, they put the wrong valves in. So the valves are really high right now, they're too high, so that, that's an issue. All those valves are gonna be lowered during this irrigation project on Deer Run. So, but yes, I, I could, I mean, if it was me, I would do the PVC, if, to try to save your own money right now, I would do the PVC loops.
All right, how about this, how about you come back next, at the next capital meeting, and give us a price for each nine for in-house?
In-house.
All right, and we'll, and we'll entertain that.
And when you can start, and give us a timeframe?
Well, we'll go just for a year.
Well, I don't think you can do it this year.
No, no, 2020, we start, 22, 23, 24, it'll be nine, and 23, 24 will be the other nine.
Yeah.
Right.
So we're placing some half the day.
That's fine.
Just tie in the loops and do the tapes.
Driving rack, driving range mat, that one we've kind of been pushing around.
I don't need it.
That one, that's the one we pushed forward again from this summer.
You wanna hit off, you guys use the driving range? It's necessary, I'm telling you. It's hitting off dirt, it was early December, and it was all dirt, on the right-hand side.
Right, so.
It was.
And before you decide on that, to, to Ray's point, so we have a mat, if you're looking downrange, it's on the left side, the mat is on the left side, so if we take the grass and put it over in front of the mat, then they can't, the mat's not usable. Right. So in this instance, what we would do is, you'd be able to have the mat, a, a second mat on the other side, so then you could flip-flop, and they would both be usable at the same time, all the time. That would be the mat and the grass.
We don't use the grass on the left-hand side correctly now.
Correct, because if we did that, then you couldn't use the mat.
The idea, the idea when we bought the, the mat, was you use the gra, the grass in front of it, and then when you get to the point that you're done, and it hasn't replaced itself or regrown, then you go to the mats. That was why we did it. So we had a place when it was all dirt, we had a place to go to until the dirt became grass again, which we have never done the correct way.
I, I would put the mat in, just mainly.
But that's how we should use the grass and the mats, that was the idea behind it.
Or use your grass for your special events, or use it on your memory days, I mean, and use your mats, I mean, the tournaments should use.
The mat, if you, if you do practice, I will tell you, the mat, early December, that right-hand side was all dirt.
Gets beat to death.
And then a lot of people, you know, it's just not right.
So you wanna put one mat on one side and one mat on?
We already have the one.
Okay. You don't put the other one on the other end?
On the other side, correct.
Because at that time, when you get, get rid of the chipping area and stuff, then it won't matter, and then when you have your minor league tours and your other tours here, then you won't have to worry about hitting the balls into the maintenance facility either.
Okay.
Let's leave it in for the first pass.
Okay.
And I'll have, I, I'm, I'm working with Ex Grass right now, the guys that put your mat in last time, and trying to work the pricing on it right now to get an actual number on it. And he's actually sending us the piece to fix the current mat.
Okay.
Okay. Clubhouse and bathroom painting.
You skipped range picker, unless we're just talking.
Range picker.
Right.
I'm sorry, range picker, 2025, 15,000.
So that's just kind of a placeholder, kind of looking ahead in the future, and as we get closer to that, if we could push it, we could, but the current range picker, you know, when I had the team evaluate it, they told me that's the approximate lifespan that it would be is 25, 26.
That's fine.
Okay.
Clubhouse and bathroom painting. I'm sorry.
I noticed that we talked about the collars being too high and therefore holding the water in, and you talked about using the large roller to try and use TV to get it down, but also when Tring was here, he talked about this machine.
Phrase mowing.
Phrase mowing, yeah.
Was he able to get it to?
As far as getting one of those, and is that, is it something that we should have in the equipment in specific here, so that we have it available to purchase?
I don't know if we uses enough of it.
Well, there's a, so, so there's a couple of different ways. You guys have a verticutter back there that has little usage, so when we, when, when I go and do the aerification this year, I'm gonna take the verticutter around my collars and try to get them down as well. So last week, when I punched the collars, I actually took the street roller, the vibra roller, and took them down and actually got some of them, I know it's hard to notice right now, but some of them did go small, they, they shrunk. Nine I got down quite a bit. So I think we can go to specific spots where we have these water dams on the greens and address those. A phrase mower is gonna run you about $60,000. Is it?
No, you can't rent those.
I'm trying to find one to rent right now. I've, I've called three of my friends and tried to get them, they don't have them, but they, they said there's getting more and more interest for people to start doing the phrase mowing, especially on the other golf courses, and I've heard people go through with sod cutters and, and just cut them off with the sod cutters, and dress them and bring them back just as well. If worse comes.
Tring doesn't have it.
They do, they do have one, it's in Naples, we'd have to go get it. We, we could, I mean, it, do me a favor, though, please go look at the process on YouTube and make sure that you're good with it before I do it.
What does that mean?
It, because when you get, they're, they're really aggressive, Ray, when you get them, it's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna look, it's gonna be scalped down, it's gonna be three or four inches lower than what it is currently. And that's what they do, they take out all the high spots, they phrase mow greens when they wanna get, when they're getting ready to renovate them, but they'll take out all the, all the high spots, it'll probably take it down six or eight inches.
I don't want to tell you how to take care of the course.
I'm not saying that, I just want, I want you to look at the process.
You were the ones that brought it up.
It, it would be awesome to do it, I'm telling you, because it would help you sheet flow better, it'd definitely help it. I just want you to look at the process, Craig, and, and make sure that you guys are good with it, so I don't freak you out when you see it. I don't, I don't think Jeff would have a problem bringing me the phrase mower.
I, I, I think you, you got, to his point, and I've said it before, it's your course, it's gotta be the way we want it to be, otherwise it won't be your course.
I just want you to look at the process, Ray, that's all I'm asking.
It's gonna be ugly, guys.
Huh?
It's gonna be ugly.
But if that's the crossing all of the other issues, then this, I want it fixed, I don't want what happened this year, I don't want it to happen again, period.
I agree.
And if that's what it takes, then I'm gonna have to live with it for too much while it comes back.
And that's all, and that's all, and in Florida, it can be six weeks, I mean, depending on our rain and stuff.
We definitely need your support when we do that, for sure.
Let him do it.
That's, I'll do it, that's fine.
Fix the course.
Yes, sir.
Okay, club, clubhouse and bathroom painting, 40,000. This was kind of my idea.
So that includes the clubhouse, the cart barn, and the four bathrooms on the golf course.
When I, when I made an early tour a couple months ago, I think, I mean, I went, I walked with these guys, and I looked at the clubhouse, and I said, damn, this building is so filthy, you guys gotta clean it up, power wash it, do something. And they said, well, you know what happens if we power wash it, and of course, I said, no, I don't know what you're talking about, we'll take all the paint off, and you're gonna have to repaint it. So we were between a rock and a hard place, do you power wash it and repaint it, or you just repaint it? You know, stop kidding yourself and have the building repainted, and I guess the, it's the original paint, is it not?
Yes.
Which makes it 10 or 11 years old at this point?
It's, I know it's 12, because I just did a 12-year.
Twelve years old?
I just did a twelve-year.
So I said to Mike, I said, okay, or I said to both Mike and Jimmy, I said, let's, let's get a price to repaint it. And then I looked at the blue columns that we have and I said, if we're going to repaint it, we might as well replace those columns with something a little bit more updated. Because it is our clubhouse. And people, they should get a good feeling and see your good-looking clubhouse when you come into, into the restaurant. So that was what my intention was, and this is the pricing they've come back with.
And that's, and that's on the high side.
Right. And we also included the, uh, the con, the, the concrete entrances to both the back room by the, uh, ice machine back there and the front entrance, the actual concrete that's painted. That's included in there too.
And the, and the back patio.
And, yes, that is, right, currently unpainted, the back patio.
I have no problem with this and I don't think it needs to be discussed. I think we just need to stand.
Anybody disagree with doing this? This is not a golf thing. It's more of a district thing.
I just question whether you give that for a thousand.
It's a restaurant thing. It is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. That will add to the restaurant cost.
So we're good on the first pass on that. That brings us to the banquet room partition, which we pushed from this past year for fifty-five thousand. I assume we're still looking at that on the first pass?
Yes.
And that brings us to the pro shop remodel for fifteen thousand?
Definitely, yes. Because it's not right.
What, what are you going to be able to?
He's, he's. So we're, we're trying to increase, um, the main idea here is, is we're trying to in, increase some area where we can add more soft goods, which is basically clothing. So the idea is to, and it's not really to take the windows out, but we're going to kind of create more area on the, on the wall so we can add, you know, slat wall and we can waterfall. You know, some, some clothing, uh, in the pro shop. If we need to replace some fixtures in there, we will. I think most of them are really okay. Uh, we might help try to fix some lighting in there because it's kind of dark. Just, just trying to bring it to life. Right. And I mean, it's kind, it is really cluttered in there.
I know Beverly said, you asked Mike, is anything?
No, I just, I, I just confused about the whole situation, but it's another one point two million next year. That's all I got to say.
I mean, no, and that, that's totally understandable. I mean, this is the first go at this. We could, if, 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 if projects are going to come out, they come out. We understand that.
I, I mean, I have no complaints. It's the way it's been. It's the way it's going to be, I guess, so. I, I, I do have, though, I've been watching, uh, do you guys have enough help? I mean, enough people, because I've noticed in the past that the district helps a lot. And is it because you don't have enough people or do you think the district is working for Indigo?
I'm not sure any individual instance you're talking to, they don't help us with anything that we do operating wise. If it comes to a repair of some sort.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't have somebody with the skill set to do some of those situations.
But doesn't that have to come out of your budget and, and you have to fix it?
We can, I mean.
I know it's different because Mike is gone now over there and things are going to be, run different.
They, they still help. Correct. But also, all the money comes out of the same pocket. I mean, I could spend two thousand to outsource it to somebody else or the district could help us and we could do it for a better cost. I feel it's more efficient that way. They've been super happy to help us with, it's not like it's every day. I mean, they help us with stuff and like, like I said.
Well, I'm just, I'm just hoping you have enough people to do what you, you got to do and.
I think, I think it's the most efficient way to do it. I mean, we're all basically on the same team anyway.
Well, yeah, we are, but it's budget-wise, it, it, uh, it looks a little different, you know? Because I'm trying to get true cost of what's going on. It's all I really care about.
Sure. I don't, I don't.
And we don't get that, you know? It's just something to look at and work on. I mean, I'm not looking, I mean, I just, you guys have a totally separate budget. And that's what you need to do is, now if the district can help you or you can help the district, I guess that's fine. But not to count on each other. You, you shouldn't do that.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying you do, but, you know, when you do, like, I know the banquet room didn't, uh, didn't, uh, Sun Lake people help you out a lot in there and put all the lights in and all that?
Absolutely.
I mean, and it, and it didn't show up on your budget. We, it's Sun Lake people.
Sure. Um, they did, they did put some labor to it and if, in that instance, if, if the board would so do that, I'd be happy to. They send me a bill every month. If they billed me for their labor, I, I'm happy to do that. I mean, we're just swapping it over on the paper. You're a hundred percent correct, though. They, they, they did help us do that. But again, I don't, I don't have anybody, I'm, I mean, I have golf guys, restaurant guys, and guys that cut grass. I don't have anybody that does electricity or, or that sort of stuff.
Well, I'm just saying, when, when you budget something, you put eleven thousand for the grape reason, the stuff in there or whatever it was, was that with the mind that we were, the Sun Lake people were going to do it? Or were you going to pay for that?
Well, we also, if you look at the line below, that was the furniture and that was something that the board had asked me to do during the COVID time. So that, that original budget was, was twenty thousand or so and we, we ended up moving some money out. So we'd had to, we had, in order to finish the actual project, we had to figure out how to do it in-house to get that done. But originally, it was not necessarily in-house.
Yeah, and that was done, I, I'm sure by Mike, right? Those umbrellas, I think I saw him out there directing traffic. Okay, I, I just wanted to bring that up. It just.
Okay. Any other, uh, that kind of gets us through the list.
Don't, well, the, the last, the last.
Oh, I missed a gazebo. I apologize.
Yeah, we did miss the gazebo.
That's what I said. It kind of got us through the list.
So this is something that's, I mean, and again, it's out there, so we have time to discuss it, but this is just something that's come up several times. I put it back on the list.
Mr. Norcross's gazebo is out.
That's fine. I'm fine with that.
When you get the weddings up to a decent amount, if we ever do get to that point, we can certainly have a conversation on, on getting a gazebo.
Um, I mean, we're.
When, when things were good, we had twelve weddings at most.
I think we're doing probably at least that this year. We got one tomorrow. Use them on.
Twelve doesn't rate a gazebo.
And that's fine. The last, there is one more item on there, um, is the, the kitchen equipment contingency. Kind of in the past, I would kind, I would just do my best guess as far as equipment that I've been putting money into, when we needed to replace it. I think it's most efficient that we just kind of earmark, I mean, I think ten's probably decent. I mean, there, there might be a piece of equipment in there that would be more than that.
Not in capital. It's in expense.
Correct. But again, but again, all this equipment's over five grand. I can't, I don't, under the contract, I don't have authorization to do that. I would, I still need board approval.
Figure out where you want to put it. I'm not putting it in capital.
Well, you have to answer that question.
The same, yes, answering the same question.
If it's over five thousand dollars, then it has to go in capital for the contract. Okay.
Which we should do anyway.
Sounds like we're going to have to get back to you on that. He's, we're going to review it and we'll let you know what the contract says and we'll, and again, I don't have an issue with it either way.
It hasn't been in the capital yet. Why all of a sudden now is it an issue?
Well, we, we've always put individual equipment in the capital. So originally, when this was done, like, there would be, if I need a new oven, there would be an oven, a big ice machine. But the problem is, is that if I say I'm going to replace an oven next year and the oven's still good next year, why replace it? I'm, I'm guessing when this equipment's going to go out and I give it, you know, I, I do the best I can, but at least this way, say I have an oven go out, I could come to you and say, hey, I need an oven tomorrow, and then you can approve it at that time. And then we just get it done when it's.
All right, get back to us on it, but I can tell you. We'll get back to us on it. We'll leave it at that. Anything else on budgets? Any other questions? I do have one, one favor for you. When you present your, your, uh, your budget next, then whatever that, your next meeting is, I'd like to have a clarification on, uh, got marshals and starters, what exactly your plans are, what do they do, what do you expect to have of them? How often do they work? I'd like to know a little bit more about it because I'm not comfortable with what I've seen out there to this point. So if you could get a little bit of explanation, I would appreciate it.
Are you, so we, we, we use marshals a little more this year than I think we may have previously, so when, and you're, are you saying you'd like to see more or less?
I'd like to know what they're doing. They drive around and wait.
And I don't know how impressed you could feel about this, but I would like to see if we could open up the snack shack, eliminate the Deer Club, Deer Run cart, only have a cart on turtle. And have that open during, especially during season.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've, we've done that in the past. Um, I'd.
You know, the best way to open it, I agree with opening it. You've got to switch the nines on, on deer.
We can do that too.
That's what you got to do. That's, that's one way to get it done.
That's the way it was.
I'm just saying, if you switch the nines on deer, then people making the turn at deer are right at the snack shop, right in the middle of their round.
That's right.
What more do you want? The, the signature hole doesn't have to be the last hole. It could still be hole number seven, hole number five.
Nines, nines are way better finishing hole.
Well, last time I brought it up to you guys, I was.
It, there, there will be cost to change, but that's, I mean, it's doable.
So when the, I understand this card, there's, there's a cost, but to me, if you want to use the, the shack, that's the way to do it.
Because I, long-term, I see if we could get rid of the scrub jay stuff in the preserve. That where that shelter is right now would be a perfect place for, in that particular area for a restaurant and a snack shack and do the same thing over there, eliminate the carts. That's what that's long-term, because I know how much, but right now they're saying this guy, what was, what was it? Two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah. It was a hundred. It was, yeah, no, it was, it was definitely the two hundred.
So, I mean, but that's where my long-term vision is, but I, I definitely like to see that. Until, until such time as they get rid of the scrub jay portion, you're not going to be able to meet their needs. Because there's no reason why we couldn't have it in a couple of different areas right there around one.
And really, the only cost, the, the cost first is switching the nines of your golf, scorecard.
I'll have to look at the monuments on the course too.
Yeah.
The big, the big cost is the card.
I think they went to that because of, I think it's, we'll be. I'd have to go review that.
Yes, we'll do that in a minute.
Scorecards, yes, is, would be the number one.
Is the biggest problem.
Couple thousand.
Right. But I, I think to me, that would make much more sense. If I'm making the turn and there's a hot dog place right there.
I have a hot dog.
I'm, I'm going to get a hot dog. I am. If I'm making the turn and it's closed, I keep going.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
So.
Just because I go around and I, if I knew it was open, I'd go over there.
Yeah. All right. Any questions for these gentlemen? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. You'll get back to us on the capital situation. Any comments from anybody else? We're adjourned.
And the meeting's over at one fifty-nine PM.